Good evening and welcome everyone to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to call our commission meeting to order. First order of business is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of injustice and fraud.
First order of business is our roll call. To my far right, we have a new member, Brian Rivart. Welcome as an alternate, welcome aboard. We have next to him Jeff Kohan, and next to him Jim Fitzsimmons, I almost want to say Jimmy. To my left, Steve Allenson. To Steve's left, Dave Parent. And to Dave Parent's left, Joe Saunders. And staff on board, we have Sharon Tubey, who is our recording secretary. And we have Kevin Pugini, who is our town planner. Before we get started, want to let everybody know there are a few items that are not going to be heard today. First on public hearing is item number one, zoning change, R18 to DD 40, Lost and Found Venture LLC, 10 Mansion Road, which is application 503-23, that is not going to be heard today. We have item number three, special permit, waste reduction facility, Bezuto 507 Main Street, Yalesville, application 402-24. We have item number four, special permit, drive-through retail restaurant, Capure 905 North Colony Road, application 403-24. We have item number six, re-subdivision under 8.30G, Sunwood Development Corp., 1136 Durham Road, application 101-24. And last item not being heard today is number eight, and that is site plan, retail restaurant, 127 Church Street, Yalesville, application 201-24. Those will not be heard today. Can I get a consideration for the minutes for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning meeting for January 10th, 2024? Typo here, but it's four.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2024 meeting has submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signifying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions, motion carries. All right. We have, let's see, item number two, public hearing, special permit, Jeff Ahern, 300 Church Street Apartments, application 414-23. Can I ask the applicant to please come up? And can I ask the secretary to read into the minutes the correspondence we've received?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legal notice, 414-23, special permit request for Jay Ahern to convert the top floor of an existing office building to three residential apartment units located at 300 Church Street, Yalesville, CA-12, Commercial District. We have correspondence to Jeff Ahern dated November 29th, 2023, from Kevin Pugini, Town Planner. We have an inspection report from the Wallingford Fire Department, signed on 11/21/23. We have an interdepartmental referral dated 11/20/23, from Allison Kapaschinsky, Town Engineer. We have an inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, dated November 27th, 2023. We have Planning and Zoning Sign-Off Sheet from received date November 29th, that states no comments from Health, Inland, Wetlands, and Electric Division. We have an interdepartmental referral dated November 29th, 2023, from, I believe it's Aaron O'Hara, Environmental Planner, dated, received November 14th, 2023. We have correspondence, November 29th, 2023, to Jeff Ahern, from Kevin Pugini, Town Planner. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our secretary, we'll switch.
Thank you for the promotion.
I do want to just let everybody know, for voting purposes, it will be Commissioner Kohan, Commissioner Fitzsimmons, Commissioner Allenson, and Commissioner Parent, and myself. So I just wanted to let everybody know on the voting. Commissioner Fitzsimmons, you had something to ask first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is actually to the town staff. We don't have a memo in the file that the special permit sign was posted. Do you have evidence after the showed application, we talked about getting a memo, any time this special permit application, the sign would be up, posted, and there'd be a memo to the file confirming?
Yes, I have documentation. It was emailed to me. So if you want to see that, let me know in the future, and I'll provide that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The applicant want to do his presentation.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano. I'm a licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm of Giuliano Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. Mr. Ahern asked me to assist him in this endeavor. In essence, this is the Westbrook Lobster facility at 300 Church Street, basically on the corner of Main Street and Route 68. I believe most of you are familiar with the site. After the pandemic, Mr. Ahern has had a great difficulty trying to find a tenant for the third floor of his building. So after two years, well, 18 months, he decided to approach the town about a change of use from retail or office to three residential apartments. He asked me to get involved, to basically make sure with respect to parking and zoning requirements, if it was possible, and I know he had a number of conversations with town staff. So we took an existing site plan that he had for the site, checked the regulations with respect to parking, and the change from retail to residential actually reduced the required amount of parking. So I believe there are about 185 spaces on the site that are currently there, and with the change to residential, we need, I believe it's 12 less. So we went through that exercise. There was a question, and Mr. Pugini went out, took a look, and there was a slight change from the site plans since the date it was, but we're still well above what was required for parking. So in essence, it's just a change to the residential. We meet the zoning requirements, we have enough parking. Basically, with the parking, with that being residential, with there being retail shops and offices, the parking kind of exists, can coexist. Not everyone is going to need parking all at the same time, just because of time differences when residential's there, the restaurants in use, and when the retail and office shops are open. So it'll truly be a mixed-use facility. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. There are no site changes with respect to anything outside of the building, and with respect to the inside of the building, once approved, and if approved, Mr. Ahern will have to make sure that he complies with all building, safety, fire, health requirements. With that, I'll answer any questions the commissioner may have.
Thank you very much. Any commissioners have anything? Our staff?
No further comments.
All right. This is a public hearing. If anybody has anything that they would like to bring up regarding this application, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. Because it's a special permit, what are the total number of residential dwelling units will be when the floor is converted? How many total apartments?
Three.
Three. And there are apartments, not condos?
I believe they are apartments, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
That was just public hearing.
Sorry.
We're going. It's not your first time in that chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a motion that the commission approve a special permit request for Ahern to change existing office space to residential dwelling units located at 300 Church Street, Yalesville, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, Wallingford Water and Sewer Division, dated 11/27/23. Number two, comments from the Office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal, dated 11/21/23. Number three, comments from the Office of the Wallingford Town Planner, dated 11/29/23. And finally, number four, final floor plans for units to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion carries. Now you can.
All set? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, I would like to ask the Commissioner Fitzsimmons to call the order for the Aquifer Protection Agency Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission table the rest of the agenda, so we could call to order the meeting of the Aquifer Protection District of the Town of Wallingford.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by, saying aye?
Aye.
Nays, passes, okay? Now we're meeting. So we are, this is for application 701-24. Applicants, feel free to do your presentation.
This is just the, again, Dennis Sennaviva representing the applicant. With me is Jim Cassidy from Halcy Pearson and Cassidy, project engineer. I'm assuming, since you've gone into the, your role as the Aquifer Protection Agency, that you're looking for a presentation with respect to that application? Or do you want us to make the presentation on the whole, your preference?
Let me say all. Yeah, let's do all, yeah.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is we'll act on the Aquifer, come out of that, and then we'll, because this part's not public hearing.
Fine, thank you. So by way of background, you have the plans. There are five parcels which are involved in this application. They're a combination of 1164 North Colony Road, 1174 North Colony Road, 1180 North Colony Road, 1192 North Colony Road, and 1194 North Colony Road. And that's the Honda dealership, Executive Honda, that's there. Its involvement is really, if you look, as Jim will make his presentation, with this proposal, should it be approved, we're taking some of the land from Executive Honda, which is currently just about seven acres, and reducing it to a little over six acres, taking some of the land and putting it into the other, what is the Kia project. And we'll end up from these six lots with two lots, again, with your approval. The plan, really, the genesis of it, is that Mr. Orsini is obligated, through his relationship with Kia, to build a new dealership. The plan, as Jim will show, is about 24,000 square feet in size. Be raising all the buildings along Route 5, other than, on these parcels, other than Honda, obviously that's going to remain. As you know, and you've already made that motion, the site requires an Aquifer Protection District application, which we have filed. It's really a modification, as this site already has a permit. Jim will explain how there's no change in services. Again, it's already a Kia automobile dealership, and the site has sewer services. The application, again, that we pointed out during the presentation, reduces a number of existing nonconformities. So it's not just knocking down the buildings. Right now, there are, on the five parcels, a total of six curb cuts. We would be reducing them to three, two for the Kia operation, and one for Honda. There is just about zero landscaping along Route 5. There is additional landscaping that's being proposed under our application, so it really is, you know, the redevelopment, rehabilitation of the existing Kia that's been there for a while, and again, with your approval, will be an attractive addition to that area of town. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cassidy.
Doesn't look like the screen likes you.
Okay. Unless the screen comes up, I'll use boards for now, if that's okay. For the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer and principal with the firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy, here tonight representing Executive Kia, John Orsini, the owner of Executive Auto. We're here seeking a special permit, site plan approval, for the redevelopment of his properties, actually located at 164, actually through 194 North Colony Road here in Wallingford, Connecticut. 164 North Colony Road is the existing Kia dealership on North Colony Road, if anyone's familiar with it. The first page that I was going to present on the screen, probably showed a little better on the screen, but I have a full copy, full-size copy, of an aerial photo of the overall site. And I'm going to try to explain what's actually going on here. We are looking at five parcels in total. Parcel number one is 164 North Colony Road, North Colony Road being on the left-hand side, north is up. This is the existing Kia dealership. It contains an existing 11,000-square dealership building. To the north of that, there is another parcel, known as 174. That was a former repair facility. It's also used as display area for the Kia dealership. There's a parcel with this access strip on the far right-hand side. This is 1180 North Colony Road. This is actually Executive Office's office building at the back portion of that property. And then you have the, what's called the longer horseshoe-shaped piece of the property. This is actually the Honda dealership that's off to the north, also owned by Executive Auto Group. And then this little isolated piece in here is 1192 North Colony Road. This is the former Connecticut motorcycle shop, which was recently acquired by Executive Auto Group also. What we're proposing to do, as part of this development, is to do a lot lane modification, where we're going to take these three parcels, a portion of the Honda parcel, and the former Connecticut motorcycle parcel, and make it into one contiguous piece of property. If you were to take a look at the lots today, what I'll note is they're, first, they're in your RF40 zone. So if you look at your zoning requirements, and there's a zoning table on the existing conditions survey, that gives you all the requirements under section 3.1, sorry, 5.1C of your zoning regulations. And it lists out all the requirements, so everything boxed in green is the existing requirements. If I look at the individual lots, so this being the Kia dealership, what you find is everything highlighted in yellow is presently existing, nonconforming to the regulation. So the Kia dealership itself is basically nonconforming to everything, other than frontage and building coverage. The vacant parcel, that he used to have the repair facility on it, is nonconforming to area frontage, front yard setback, and the side yard setbacks. The office building is the only thing that is basically compliant, other than it only has a 50-foot access strip, so it doesn't meet your frontage requirement. And then the smaller parcel that was Connecticut Cycle was basically nonconforming to everything, other than building coverage. The only one that was mostly compliant is the Honda dealership. The only thing it doesn't comply with is the required open space, and the RF40 zone, you're required to have 25% open space. It's at 21 point, or 23.1%. So what we're proposing to do, as I mentioned, is to take the three lots down here, combine them into one. We're taking a corner of the Honda dealership, and then we're taking the Connecticut motorcycle parcel, and making it into one parcel. What we'll end up with is a parcel that's 4.675 acres, or 207, sorry, 207, sorry, 20702 square feet. It'll have about 590 feet of frontage along North Colony Road. With the new parcel, what we're looking to do is we're going to take down the existing Kia dealership, and we're going to build a new state-of-the-art building per Kia's requirements. The new building will be mainly a one-story structure with a footprint of about 24,000 square feet. The northerly end of the park, sorry, the northerly end of the building would be the sales and office area. The southern portion is going to be the service area. Presently, along this frontage, just for the Kia dealership, there's five curb cuts. We're going to be reducing the curb cuts down to two. They're kind of centrally located, because if you go by the site, what you find is there's a pretty extreme difference in grade from the north down to the south. It drops off about 20 feet difference in grade. So we need to keep the driveways a little more centered to the property to make the grade work. What we'll be doing is cutting down the grade on the north side, and doing some minor filling on the south side. Associated with the new building, we're looking at building, obviously, side access strip across the front of it. There'd be a parking area off to the north side of the building. This would primarily be used for new vehicle and used vehicle display. There's area parking to the front. This would be for vehicles coming in for service. In addition to, there'd be parking spaces indirectly in the front for visitors or customers to the store. And then the area off to the south would be used for areas of vehicles that are going to be serviced. You'll also see an area in gray out to the back here. That is an existing parking area that contains about 50 parking spaces. As part of the regrading we're doing of the site, we're going to be dropping the grade of that parking lot, but repaving it in the same configuration. That area is presently used for employee and also overflow inventory, so that parking area would remain as part of this. Access would be through the Honda site, similar to the way it is today. So in total, for parking, what we're looking at is having about 136 parking spaces on the lower section, 50 parking spaces, the same as up on the upper section today. Should also be noted, if you take a look at the site today, there's other sections of the zoning regulations that it doesn't comply with under the RF40 zone, and we're going to make it less noncompliant than it is today. Presently, you require that the frontage, or the front yard setback, be landscaped. Presently, if you go out there, you'd find the pavement is not only to the front property line, it's actually to the edge of the roadway. There is no landscaping along the frontage of the site. We are going to be pulling back, creating a landscape area of a minimum of at least 10 feet in width within the landscape area, we'll be planting canopy trees every 50 feet on center, as required in the RF40 zone. In addition to, if you take a look at the parking lot today, there's really no landscaping within the parking lot itself. You have a regulation that says we need to provide, I believe it's 15 square feet of landscaping for every parking space we're proposing. We're proposing to put a series of landscape islands within the parking lot itself that would actually meet and exceed the overall requirement for the overall landscaping within the parking area. In addition to, there's presently really no landscape buffers along the backside. If you go out there today, you're going to find a lot of large retaining walls around the edge of the property. They're made out of large concrete blocks, and quite honestly, they're not that great in shape. The majority of those retaining walls will be removed. There's going to be one new, smaller retaining wall built on the north and the east side, but the back portion would actually become a landscape slope, so it'd be a grass slope along the back. The grade, again, of this parking lot's going to be lowered, so it'd be a more gradual grade as it comes down into our site. This is just another overlay of the proposed site versus the existing conditions. So you can see that there's, basically, I'm just doing this to represent, there's a lot more green area that's going to be happening around the building compared to what's out there today. There's a significant reduction in curb cuts. Access to the 1180 site would still be through the Honda dealership above, so that all remained the same. What's important to note is when we do our lot line modification, what it does is it brings the majority of the sites into compliance. What happens is the four sites down below, 1164 through 1192, all become 1164, becomes one parcel, becomes the Kia dealership parcel. So again, in green is the requirements of the RF40 zone, so we need to have 40,000 square feet minimum lot area, 150 feet of frontage, 50-foot front yard setback, 20-foot side yard, 50-foot rear yard, 30% of building coverage, 25% of landscape area, and a maximum building height of 30 feet. The Kia dealership will far meet and exceed all those requirements. The Honda dealership, when we do our modification, will stay basically the same overall. The only thing that will be still existing noncompliant would be the percent of landscape area, but it'll be at the exact same number as was originally, so it's not any more noncompliant than it originally was. Some of the other major improvements we're making to the site, storm drainage. If you go out there today, there's just a series of catch basins within the parking lot. The water either flows directly out into North Colony Road, and is collected by two catch basins that are along the frontage, or there's a series of catch basins kind of scattered throughout the site. More importantly, if you take a look at it today, there's no measures to treat stormwater quality, as it comes off and ties into the state drainage system. What we're proposing for this development, number one, is to construct a whole new drainage system that'll collect all the water coming off the site and adequately handle it, and then discharge into the state drainage system. It's important to know that we're not proposing any stormwater detention on this site. There's actually going to be a reduction in runoff, because with this new development, we're actually looking at a reduction of about 12,000 square feet of impervious coverage, just by redeveloping the site, so ultimately, it reduces the amount of runoff. Before these new systems tie into the state system, they'll all be discharging through a hydrodynamic separator that would treat the water. So the water will be treated before it ties into the drainage system for the state, and that will ultimately be part of the approval that we need to get from the state for this project. Other utilities, important to note, the way the sanitary sewers work on this site, the existing building is tied into public sewers. It goes through a forest vein system out the south side of the building, and then ties into- and then ties into a sanitary lateral that's actually up on the handy dealership property. We're going to build a new, similar system. We'll be replacing a portion of that sanitary lateral. It'll still be serviced by public sewers. It will be a forest vein system, just like it is today. so this plan has turned 90 degrees. If you go to the site today, the building's actually serviced by well, so I have it on public water. Recently, there was an extension of the water main down North Colony Road that serviced the auto repair facility at the backside of the Honda dealership. We're going to be extending that water main about 360 feet down the road, providing a new hydrant for fire protection along North Colony Road. Off that new main, we're going to be bringing a fire line into the north side of the building, along with individual fire service. So whereas the building right now is on well, it will finally be on public water. So one of the things everyone's been asking is how are you going to handle this? How are you going to handle the construction of the site with the existing dealership in place? So I have a couple plans, and they're in your packets. You have two phases for the demo plan. What will happen is this building down here is the existing dealership. There's a little glass extension on it. That's the new car delivery or a little show area. That little extension's coming off. That north edge of the existing building will demarcate our limits of construction for Phase 1. Between Phase 1 and Phase 2, we're going to put up some large concrete blocks to prevent traffic from coming from the construction area down into dealership area. There will be one curb cut that will remain open on the far south end. This area will basically be used for, in the building for new car display, and the service area, and service vehicles, and customer parking within this building. All the display vehicles and new car inventory would have to be stored in the upper parking lot. Erosion and sediment control. Everything marked in red is erosion and sediment control. So what'll happen is we have a sediment barrier along North Colony Road, along the south side. This building will all stay in play, while the new building is able to be constructed just to the north of it. We'll continue to have one entrance, our new entrance here. That would be our construction entrance throughout the construction process. This proposed entrance will be temporarily blocked, so we have one control point that vehicles coming out, in out during construction. We would do all the grading, create the back slopes, build the building, be able to put the whole drainage system in, tie into the state drainage system, get this whole area paved, up and running. Once that is up and running, then we can go to Phase 2. Keep the barricade between Phase 1 and Phase 2. We then demo the old building, remove the pavement around the old building, remove the remaining drainage system, and then connect the sewers back in. Once that is all done, then we go back. Once the building is done, we grade it off. I got two of the same plans there. We'll create a sediment barrier around the North Colony Road, and then down along the tow道 slope. We'll repave this parking lot, sorry, we'll put the remaining drainage in, connect it into the state system, put the remaining pavement in, and then the whole project will be complete. I should mention at this point, we'd be also regrading the lower, or the upper parking lot and making that new connection. I'll also note, when we looked at your zoning regulations, one thing it talks about that doesn't occur out there is connectivity between sites. Because of the extreme grade between the north site and nothing happening down on the south side, it's a little difficult to make vehicle connections between it. But what we did propose is we have a set of stairs for employees, for customers, to actually be able to walk from one parking lot to the other. Where you don't have it today, they actually have to walk all the way around to go up the side driveway and up into the upper parking lot. So that's the connectivity we're proposing as part of this project. As I mentioned, presently, if you go out there, there's really nothing in the way of landscaping. In your RF-40 zone, it does require landscaping along the frontage. Where there's nothing today, we are proposing to increase it to at least 10 feet. We're also proposing to put some landscape islands in. We're looking at putting a series of street trees every 50 feet along the entire frontage. You're required to have landscaping within the parking lot. We're proposing to add 13 new islands within the parking lot to meet that requirement with a series of ornamental trees within those landscape islands. And then you also have a section in the RF-40 zone that says you're supposed to, you're supposed to have a landscape strip along the front of the building. Whereas today is pavement right to the front of the building, no landscaping. What we're proposing to do is in front of the service area, to have the sidewalk, and then a good 10-foot strip of landscaping with those shrubs planted within that area too. Site circulation, I should talk a little bit about also. What's proposed is that this would be main entrance for customers. They're looking for new cars. Parking is in front of the customer entrance to the new car dealership. Off to the north, you see this little projection. This is a new vehicle delivery area. So after you buy a new car, and they show you how to use all the new features, you can exit out here and then continue on. You'll see a driveway that comes into the center of the building here. This is an access. There'd be a garage door that accesses into the vehicle service area. So a customer will be able to drive up to this door. A service advisor will open the door, they pull in. There's queuing for, two lanes of queuing for two, so a total of four vehicles would actually occur within the building. So if I flip over to the floor plan, this would be the North Colony Road side of the building. This is the new vehicle display area. This is the office area to the back. This is the service advisor and the service entry area. So what'll happen is the vehicles being serviced will be able to drive directly in. They'll be reviewed, see what needs to be done. And then from there, they'd actually be able to pull right into the service base. So this all occurs inside. They get serviced inside, and then they'd be able to continue out the south side of the building, and then continue out the access drive to the, to the south. So all that interaction happens inside the building, not outside anymore. The building, as I mentioned, is going to basically be a one-story structure. And I say basically a one-story structure, because the entire service area is one-story. The front section, the display area is one stories. Other than the back half, there is a small mezzanine section that's going to be two stories. They'll have some office space above. So there's one small section of the building that is two stories. But basically, the rest of it is one story. The materials, per Kia design requirements, are going to be more modern, state-of-the-art type materials. The majority of the materials is going to be painted aluminum surface. This whole portion of the service, I'm sorry, the display area will be a glass front. I don't think it shows well in elevation, but we did submit some 3D renderings of the building itself. So this would be the north side of the building, the vehicle display and delivery area. So that would be all storefront glass with silver aluminum mullions between the windows. These would be the two service entry doors in the center portion of buildings. This would be the service area with some higher windows to introduce natural light into the building. So it'll all be more modern materials. Again, it's going to be a light gray and a darker gray aluminum-type material. As for the aquifer protection zone, what we're proposing is the same use that's presently out there today. There's presently a permit under the aquifer protection zone for the use of this property as automotive repair facility. We're not proposing to change any of the uses. We're not proposing to change any of the chemicals that are used as part of this facility. All we're proposing to do is to move it from one building to the other and put it in more of a newer, state-of-the-art structure. All hazardous materials will be stored within the building in an environmentally safe area. Discharge of floor drains from the building go through a floor drain system. There's oil-water separator outside the building, just as there is today, and then is eventually pumped out to the sanitary sewers. So it's the same operation that's there today. It's just an improved operation over the, I'll say, outdated building that's out there right now. A lot cleaner, new facility. So with that, I conclude my presentation, and hopefully answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commissioners as it relates to the Wallingford Aquifer Protection Agency. Does any commissioners have any questions? Kevin, how about on your end?
No, I think he answered pretty much all of my questions regarding that. As far as the emergency response action plan and the materials management plan, that'll be updated as part of the permit? I'm all set then.
That's correct.
I'm all set then.
All right. Bringing it back to the commissioners, any other comments? Or are we okay to act as the Wallingford Aquifer Protection Agency? Yes, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one question on the aquifer protection coverage for this. And basically, this is through you to the town planner. How often, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to ask the question. How often does the inspection for the Aquifer Protection Agency get done? And who actually does the inspection?
It's roughly, it's supposed to be yearly, but during COVID, there was a lapse. And I've been trying to get together with the Water and Sewer Division to schedule the inspections again, but they have short staffing, and they haven't given me any dates yet. So hopefully, it was supposed to be upcoming as soon as possible. So that'll be hopefully resumed. But I did meet with DEEP, and we went out and we inspected some sites. So we'll, we're going to keep, we're going to hopefully get that going again once Water and Sewer gets back to me and gets staff in place.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. And I'll have my editorial comment that, you know, quite frankly, this is a very important component of, you know, this commission. And, you know, there really shouldn't be any excuses for not having, you know, lack of personnel is not an answer. This needs to be done on an annual basis. And so, you know, I'm okay with, you know, us approving the renewal of their permit, but, you know, I don't know if there's any way to have any self-inspection, you know? If, you know, the town can't get out to, you know, do the right inspection. I mean, so that's my concern. You know, this, I think, you know, is a critical piece that in some way, shape, or form should be, you know, proactively addressed. So, thank you.
We all agree with that. Any other commissioners? I'll pull it in for a motion. And just voting as Aqua Protection Agency will be Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Fitzsimmons, Commissioner Allenson, Commissioner Parent, and Commissioner Vanuit.
Mr. Chairman, acting as the Wallingford Aquifer Protection Agency, I move that the aquifer protection permit revision request to demolish an existing car dealership and existing retail store, merge contiguous properties, and construct a new 23,000-square-foot building for use as a car dealership, and reconfigure an existing parking area on plans entitled Site Plan/Special Permit Modification Proposed Automobile Dealership, dated January 4, 2024, and revised to February 6, 2024, subject to the following conditions. Number one, revised materials management plan forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Office. Number two, an updated emergency response action plan forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Office in Wallingford.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
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 And yes. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to close the Aquifer Protection Agency?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the meeting of the Wallingford Aquifer Protection Agency and resume meeting as the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Motion carries. All right. Back to planning and zoning. Does that conclude your presentation for the planning and zoning also?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to bring it back to the commissioners if they have any questions regarding... Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that. Can I ask the secretary to read in the correspondence? Thank you very much.
Your paperwork as requested. Legal notice, number 404-24, Special Permit Request for Executive Auto Group LLC to demolish an existing car dealership and reconstruct and reconfigure the existing site and merge contiguous parcels to accommodate a new car dealership building and parking area located at 1164, 1174, 1180, 1192, and 1194 North Colony Road, RF-40, Route 5 District. We have a application and site plan dated receipt January 5, 2024. We have a memorandum from the Department of Engineering dated January 31, 2024. An inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, dated February 1, 2024. Correspondence to Executive Auto Group from Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated February 2, 2024. Interdepartmental comments dated February 9, 2024, from Inland and Wetlands Department. I believe that's Aaron O'Hare. Email correspondence from Kevin, forwarded from Kevin Pugini, originally from James Cassidy, dated February 9, 2024. Correspondence from James Cassidy to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated February 6, 2024. And interdepartmental comments dated, I believe this is a duplicate, February 9, 2024, from Aaron O'Hare. Give me one second just to confirm that that's a duplicate. Yes, I was blessed to receive two. That is all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bringing it back to the commissioners, do the commissioners have any questions? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Overall, I'm okay with the plan, but I do have, you know, a couple of questions. And the first question is, you mentioned the reduction in impervious surface. And can you go through that calculation? You know, you mentioned a fairly large number, yet, you know, the site really doesn't dramatically change. The only thing I can think is, maybe you're including the landscaped areas, you know, as part of the reduction in the impervious surface. So could you just explain that a little more? You said there was a fairly substantial...
Yeah, so the reduction in impervious surfaces from what's out there today to will be out there. And I'm taking impervious surfaces as building areas, concrete walks, and paid parking lot driveways. Compared to what's out there today, there's going to be a reduction of 12,266 square feet. Where we're picking it up is, if you go out there today, as I mentioned, like along the entire back or the east side of the building and off to the south side, where the service area, there's some pretty extreme retaining walls out there today. Those are all being eliminated, and we're going to be doing a two-and-a-half-to-one slope in those areas instead. That would be vegetated, so it'd be a non-impervious surface. So that there's where the majority of the reduction is. What I also should have mentioned, as part of the lot line modification between us and the Honda dealership, we're taking about nine-tenths of an acre of the Honda dealership and incorporating into this overall site. In order to do that, I do need to remove a significant portion of their parking. I'm actually losing about 50 parking spaces on their property. There's an area highlighted or outlined in red on your maps that shows through... There's an area highlighted or outlined in red on your maps that shows the revised parking on the Honda dealership, and that's actually a reduction of about 50 parking spaces. So there's a pretty significant area of payment that is being reduced, or impervious surfaces being reduced on the overall development.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to see where that came in. You know, the next question, basically, we've asked, you know, there's been a few applications basically over on this site over the last few years, and one of the things that always comes up is the question about sidewalks. Was there any consideration to putting in a sidewalk here?
We, the question did come up, we looked into sidewalks. I'll be quite honest, when you go to the north, if I remember correctly, it had mentioned the nearest sidewalks, about 2,000 feet away, almost at the Meriden Town Line, that's on the same side of the road. And then if I go down to the south, I can't remember the name of the next intersecting road, I might find it here.
Circle Drive.
Circle Drive. There's a sidewalk on the opposite side of Circle Drive. So we'd be looking at putting a section of sidewalk in the middle of nowhere on a very busy road with no place for people to go other than out into a very busy road, and we just thought it was a dangerous situation for not to put sidewalks in front of this site.
Fair enough. That was really kind of the answer I was expecting. I do, you know, travel that way quite often, and I do see people walking down south in the road. And, you know, once you leave your site, you know, there is an area where, you know, it'd be really hard to, you know, maintain a continuous sidewalk. But I wanted to ask the question. And the last question I had, I just wanted to go back into the landscaping. You know, the number you mentioned was 10 feet, you know, with the area of landscaping, and-
Yeah, I apologize for not being at my computer, I didn't have the number written down. So it's actually 20 square feet. That's per Section 4.16 E1B of your regulations. I think you need to have a requirement of 10 square feet of, 10 square feet of landscaping for each parking space. So if I look at the bottom parking lot, it was 136 spaces. It requires 2,720 square feet of landscaping within the parking lot. Based upon the islands I'm showing on the plan, and there's a table on Sheet 5 of your plan set that goes through this calculation, we're at 3,097, so we exceed the requirement of that regulation.
So what is the width from, you know, the road as far as-
That's a different requirement along the frontage. What the regulation says is that the front yard is not supposed to be pavement, it's supposed to be a landscaped area.
Right.
What we're looking at is, you know, in redeveloping this, if you go out there today, as I mentioned, not only is the pavement to the front property line, it's to the edge of the road. There's nothing out there today. So we tried to pull this site back and make this site work best we can and give something back. So it's still not conforming, but it's less non-conforming. We pulled it at a minimum 10 feet, on spots up to 20 feet. This gave us some room to plant some narrower column trees within that frontage, so we can also meet the requirement of having one street tree for every 50 feet of frontage. We're never going to get to the full 50-foot front yard setback of landscaping and be able to develop, redevelop the site.
Right. Yeah, that seems to be the case in a number of different spots. And what other kind of plantings were you going to have? You mentioned a couple of trees.
Yes, we have a bunch of environmental trees within the parking area.
I'm sure it'll look nice, that's basically-
Again, there's nothing there today. The other thing that we requested to do, just so you know, is with your MS4 permitting, which is your permit that basically gets filed through DEP from the town, that also when it goes through EPA, you're supposed to try to treat stormwater quality. So what they're looking for is they have what are called disconnected impervious surfaces. So that's basically if you have a pervious surface, it doesn't drain directly to the catch basin. So when you see the islands in the parking lot, they're actually not going to be curved, they're going to be slightly depressed. They'll be landscaped with a what we call riverjack, so a larger diameter landscaping stone. So the water will be able to sheet flow off the parking area, off the paved area into those islands, groundwater, promote some groundwater infiltration. So that's another feature proposing as part of these landscaped islands. Again, none of that exists today. It's basically all pavement, no landscaping. So we've tried to, as best we can, working with Kia's requirements with an existing non-conforming site in your zoning regulations, to try to get a happy balance between everything and come up with a site that would work.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have several questions, following up on some comments that Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen mentioned. First, to the applicant, you've received all the correspondence that Mr. Allenson acknowledged, correct?
Other than the one you mentioned from Aaron O'Hare on the 9th, but I did talk to her earlier today. So the, what she had brought up with me, twofold. Number one, the erosion sediment controls, she wanted a little more of an explanation as part of our ENS measures. We have a temporary sediment basing during Phase 1, and she wanted to know how it's discharging and all that, and that's, I told her it's a detail I can work out with her. Typically, when we're showing an erosion sediment control plan with a temporary basin, I'll say it's a little more fluid in that it needs to be able to be modified throughout construction. So we show a generic area for it and a generic detail, and we work it out through construction because it's going to, it's going to vary. It's going to have to change in elevation and change in dimensions as we go through the construction process. So it's something I could tell, I could work out with her. She wanted me to explain to her Phase 2 construction. Phase 2, basically, by the time you tear down the building and you repave the parking lot, you're talking about an acre lot. It's a very small area. It's very minimal, and I'm sure it's probably going to be the fastest phase of all the construction because the new buildings are going to be open and they want to get it completed. Her final question dealt with, do we need a permit from her? When we went through your regulations and all, or the wetlands regulations, I'm sorry, reviewed all the criteria, the most stringent setback requirement deals with your major brooks, like rivers, like the Quinnipiac River. Our nearest point to the Quinnipiac River is 2,000 feet. The nearest brook is Meeting House Brook, which is off to the east, which is about 1,500 feet away. Can't find any wetlands anywhere near the site, not even within a couple hundred feet of the site, anywhere near the site. The only other requirement that they have that would require us to get a wetlands permit from the Wetlands Commission is if you have an existing developed site and you have more than 25, I'm sorry, 20,000 square feet of impervious coverage existing, and you're proposing an additional 10,000 square feet, you need to go them for a permit. This particular case, we're reducing by 12,266 square feet. So we have a reduction. So there's no requirement in the regulation that requires us to go for a permit before the Wetlands Commission. So that was her only final comment that she had brought up with me this afternoon.
If I might, the reason I ask the question is, and I know the Secretary acknowledged the correspondence, but the last sentence of her memo says, "At this point, I do not think there is an inland wetlands water course permit required." So what you just said about your phone call, we don't have on the record. So you've provided information. I'd ask the Town Planner, do you have any update from the Environmental Planner confirming that no permit is required? Because the only thing I have in front of me, something says, "I do not think."
I know.
And I know they're seeking approval tonight. That's my first question.
I told her to clarify it, but that was the best she can do. But she did say that there was no issue, as she can see. That's why I had her speak with Mr. Cassidy today.
And your conversation was verbal, no email, correct?
It was verbal.
Okay. Moving on.
I wish it was email.
Moving on, if I might, we have an email, a copy of an email forwarded by the Town Planner to, who, you, dated the same date, last Thursday, and it's your email to the Fire Department, Fire Marshal. Do we have a response?
Yes, I included that.
Oh, where is it? Because I don't have it.
Oh, it came in late. I think I emailed it to the rest of the commissioners, but-
Can I have it? Then I guess the other question to the applicant is, all the comments from the staff, there's no response from you. Did you send anything and we don't have it?
There was a response letter, it was read into the record. Dated a response letter from me, it was February 6, 2024.
February 6? We're trying to go paperless, and I'm still fighting that, so I don't have, I don't have everything that everyone else has. I apologize. I was looking for your comments, so if I could review that. So I guess, I scribbled out some questions, and I guess I was interested in, I could look for it here, your response regarding sidewalks. I know Commissioner Cohen had raised it, and I do know that sidewalks are a issue, and every time it comes up along Route 5, everyone says, "Nobody would walk on Route 5." But over the years, we've been getting sidewalks along Route 5, and ultimately, the plan is they should connect. And so I think of other applications, other car dealerships, other new building in the last 10, five, 10 years along Route 5, despite objections, we're seeing sidewalks be put in. There's a sidewalk at the Toyota dealership, there's a sidewalk at the Dunkin' Donuts, there's a sidewalk at the Subaru dealership. You know, they don't always connect because ultimately, as parcels get developed, there will be connections. So this is a difficult portion of Route 5. It's extremely steep, it's a major project. The answer is, you can't provide sidewalks because of safety?
That's our concern, is if we promote sidewalks in this area, where do people go from the end of sidewalks? Any places to go is out into North Colony Road, and so we just don't want to take on the liability of promoting that to happen.
If I might, Mr. Commissioner, the answer is in Mr. Cassidy's response, February 6th that you're poring through now. Basically, we talked about it, we talked about it with the Planner, who I know, you know, advocates the sidewalks. The biggest problem, we thought, was that there was, at this point, there were some liability concerns. You know, at the end of the, you're using the sidewalk, and then when you come to the end of it, you then walk along the shoulder of the roadway to the nearest sidewalk. Does that encouragement lead to some liability both for the developer and the town when you do that? I mean, it's an interesting question. It's not cost. I think you know most of the applications that Mr. Orsini brings in, he tries to do the nicest construction and design that he possibly can. It's never been an issue. It really was a question of the fact that you don't have a sidewalk covenant program, for example. There are some towns where you can do a sidewalk covenant, and when that day does come, when all these sidewalks approvals now meet, then it can, they can be called, they can be placed in, and so you don't have that potential liability. We weren't adverse to doing something like a covenant to satisfy the town, maybe an option for you. I actually drafted one, I haven't presented it to the town yet, but I wasn't sure how far this was going to go tonight with that question. It really is a question of liability, I mean, safety. You know, do you advocate, you're advocating, or encouraging at least, people to go out into the street, they get the end of the sidewalk, where do they go? And Mr. Cassidy, I don't know if you want to share, you've got a personal story that was very telling, and I think that you get sensitized to the potential risks. So again, it's not a question of cost, it's a question of safety.
So I guess I'll share my story, I usually don't go into this, but I'm actually, I'm born and raised in Plainville. My wife's from Plainville. If anyone knows Plainville Route 10 at all, they used to be a Parsons Buick dealership. If anyone knows where Parsons Buick is, if anyone knows where Parsons Buick is, across the street is the senior center. My mother-in-law lived with us. She actually was elderly and was at, dropped her car off at Parsons, and was over at senior centers, dropped the car off for service, went over to senior center, walked back at the end of the day to get her car, pick up her car. In similar situation, there was an area where there were sidewalks and there were no sidewalks, she stepped out in the road and was killed. So it's kind of, I'm a strong believer of put sidewalks where they're meaningful, they make connections. I'm all for not having people walk in the road, but I'm not for putting sidewalks in where you're forcing somebody to step out into the road.
Yeah, I, first off, I'm very sorry for your loss. I mean, and I know you've appeared before us, and I think you know my position on sidewalks. I think they promote safety in that the people, people are going to walk, right? I mean, I know, you know, we talk about when a school builds a new building, they don't put the sidewalks in right away because they're waiting to see how the kids access the building, then they add the sidewalk. So I'm a proponent of sidewalks-
So am I.
-because people will walk in the street without them. So I, it's difficult, and again, I didn't have the benefit of your response in my material, so I didn't see it here. I mean, and I, I'm still on the, I'd still like to be on the record, I like sidewalks here, and your comments regarding the Executive Auto Group and Mr. Orsini, there's no debate there, yeah. I know he wants to do what's right. I just, I think part of it too is, looking at Route 5, every parcel that's being redeveloped, or it's the opportunity to make it conform, and sidewalks, despite, you know, people continue to walk on Route 5, there's bus stops on Route 5, you know, I see it myself. I drive Route 5 every day, and, you know, I, they're coming together, they are coming together, we're seeing them more, this parcel's tough, okay? So understand, and I appreciate your response. I think the other comment I had, and I don't see it in your response, but I just received it, your interconnectivity, if I heard you correctly during your presentation, was for pedestrians, not automobiles. Is that-
That's correct. I mean, because it extreme grades in this property, it's, I mean, on the north side, we had to build a retaining wall. There's retaining walls now, we're building a lot better, a lot shorter retaining wall than it's there now, but we still need a retaining wall.
So on the south side?
So that's an undeveloped piece of property?
Yes.
If we could in the future?
You want to jump to my question? Because you know the question. On the plans, could you put in, if and when that develops, that there would be some potential future connectivity to that parcel, again, to keep, to reduce the curb cuts on Route 5 and keep the traffic between parcels? Because that area is undeveloped, would there be an objection there?
No, I don't foresee a problem with that.
Okay. All right. And then lastly, I just want to say, because I was looking at my plans, landscaping, trees, I mean, anything you could do out there is an improvement, and so, okay, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question about the interconnectivity. On the, that south upper piece, I know you talked about stairs from the two to go for pedestrian, but that piece back there, that square with the little driveway, does that allow cars to come in there and connect between the two parcels in the back?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an existing driveway there right now.
Okay.
We're just reconfiguring, regrading the driveway to accommodate the regrading of that parking lot. And again, that parking lot is really only used for overflow inventory and for employees.
Okay.
And Mr. Orsini's staff, does have an office back there.
I guess my question goes back to what Commissioner Fitzsimmons mentioned about future interconnectivity on the south side. There's that upper piece, which has the stairs going down to it, which may not be able to physically have interconnectivity to that piece of land because of grade. And then there's the lower piece, which I think is what you were referring to for interconnectivity. Is that, I guess, eastern, southeasterly piece up way too high to have any-
It follows the slope of the Kia dealership property, so that upper parking lot you're looking at, it's going to be at the same grade of the upper portion of that southeast property, whereas where the talk, where the connection is being referred to on the south side, on the lower portion. So here, this property will end up to be about the same grade as the parking lot we're regrading. So there would be the possibility of making some kind of interconnection here, and then down here, where this driveway or this parking area is, is it going to be about the same grade as the property? Overall, the property probably rises about 30 feet in grade from east to west. So I don't know what kind of development it's going to be, but there is several opportunities for vehicle interconnection between those two properties. On the north, because it's already developed and we have a retaining wall here, there's just no way that I'm going to-
just no way I'm going to get a driveway from one to the other.
So I guess my question, in putting in the future interconnectivity, because of the two different grades, and encouraging connectivity between the parcels, would it be possible to have a future potential connection on the plans for both of those pieces?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to clear, curb cuts, I think you said you were going from three down to two?
No, we have five, we're eliminating three.
My question is, the two that exist, I know one of the curb cuts is directly across from a curb cut on the opposite side of Route 5, right now. One of them, they're facing, and it almost creates an intersection. With the two proposed, are they going to be offset? Because I think that affects traffic flow.
Are you referring to the one, for the shopping center, or the?
Yeah.
Right in here?
It looks like they're going to be offset, they're not going to be facing each other.
Yeah, the two new ones are in similar locations to existing ones.
Okay.
They may be shifted a little bit to accommodate grading.
I think the one that I'm referring to is up on the northern side of the parcel.
Those are all going to be closed, there's like two on the north and one on the south that will be closed.
I'm just making sure I'm reading the plans right. I think it's that way, but I wanted to make sure.
There's a very big one on the north side of the property, I think that's the one you're referring to.
Perfect. And then I just have one question for our town planner. I have a different question about Ms. O'Hare's statement, and I don't know if you know the answer, because it probably requires some clairvoyance.
Mm-hmm.
But she says, "I reviewed the revised plan and have several queries for the project engineer to clarify for me." He says he had a talk with her, but what is, I don't know what she expects us to do with this. And I hate to say it like this, but does she expect the commission to not act with a report like this and put the applicant in a position? Is that what she's asking? Or does she have additional comments that we're waiting for? I'm confused what to do with this, and I'm hoping you can give us some guidance.
According to her, she was set with it after talking with Mr. Cassidy today, and I asked her for clarification, but that was the best that I can get out of her. So, as of right now, there's nothing holding it up requiring a wetland permit from her end. I think Mr. Cassidy can...
So, I mean, again, two things. Fortunately, she called me at 1 o'clock this afternoon as I'm stepping out the door to a meeting, so we couldn't have a lengthy conversation. I went, I think our biggest concern is whether we need a permit from her. We went through all the criteria, and based upon criteria, a permit would not be required. Anything else that's E and S related, as you know, Mr. Orsini's going to do everything above and beyond that he needs to do. If she wants any modification or any clarification on anything E and S related, we'll work with her. We always do.
I have no question of that, I have no question in regards to what you're telling us, I have no question in regards to what Mr. Fajini's telling us. My frustration here is that I've got something in writing saying that I have questions, and I don't have something scribbled on paper that could have been dropped off at 4 o'clock this afternoon saying, "I'm all set," on paper. And this puts us in a very difficult position, so if you can please relay the commission's frustration with the paperwork. The paperwork needs to match the phone calls. And that has nothing to do with the applicant here, and I apologize to you, and I apologize to the public for having to hear this, but this is not fair to you as the applicant, it's not fair to the public that's hearing this, and it's not fair to the staff, and it's not fair to this commission. Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Well, if nobody else does, I'd like to...
I think you're good.
Joe might have something.
Oh, Joe, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go back to the sidewalks. I'm sorry, Mr. Cassidy, for your loss. I certainly understand the challenge of that, and without sidewalks, where are people going to walk? Right now, there's pavement all the way to the road, as you mentioned, and so folks can certainly walk a bit back from that, but with the landscaping in place and no sidewalk and road, it sounds like people would be forced to walk on the shoulder, and I, and I don't know if you have an answer for that, but from a standpoint of the commission, at some point, it's part of the, it's part of the requirements. At what point, if we continue to live it, and no one's ever the first to put a sidewalk, and we never get sidewalks?
So I think, again, our position is that we don't want to promote something where we're going to have somebody from our facility say, "Okay, there's a sidewalk," and walk up to all these, walk up to all these, there's no sidewalk, and walks out into the road. I think Mr. Attorney Sennaviva had a reasonable compromise in that, again, I'm all for sidewalks where it makes sense, where you're making interconnections. So maybe if you put a caveat on it, when the property gets to the south gets developed, and there could be some kind of meaningful connection made, that might be the answer. But right now, we're just not in a position of, you know, trying to promote putting sidewalks to nowhere.
Without sidewalks, where would people walk?
Hopefully, they're going to realize there's no sidewalks, and they're not going to walk out into the road. It's one less person that's going to be walking along a sidewalk with no place to go. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to chime in on the erosion and sediment control issue, because, you know, I think that is an important aspect of this, because there will be a lot of construction work, and quite frankly, some of our other recent applications that I drive by frequently, their erosion controls are not working. I won't mention any specifics, but there's a few recent ones where they have failed. So, to Mr. Allison's point, I think as long as we have a sufficient, you know, bond ourselves, you know, I think that would, you know, help us in that regard. You know, again, I think, you know, this application based on, you know, the folks doing it, I'm not too worried about it, but I think that would be a wise thing to put into the approval, some type of, you know, bond for this. Thank you.
Thank you, agreed. Any other commissioners before we go out to our town planner?
Hold on.
Sorry.
Coming back.
Sorry.
Commissioner.
One last question, I'm so sorry, Mr. Chairman, because I just received the, your Quoting the letter, "This application involves a large amount of grading and earthwork. Will most of the soil stay on site? Will there be a significant amount taken off? And how do you expect it to go?" And you say, "To allow for the redevelopment site, there is a large amount of material that will need to be removed. Material is intended to be used at another site the applicant owns in Meriden, and the truck route from this site will be Route 5 South to Route 68 East." So my question in light of that answer is, how much is a large amount of material that will be going down Route 5 and up 68? Like, how many truck trips? For the, again, I know, this is a large site, it's a large project, I know the applicant, I know he's going to do a good job, but I'm just, now we're getting into the safety of traffic on Route 5. I didn't see this until, and I was thinking, how much material, so how many truck trips are you estimating?
So it's about 19,000 yards in total that come off the site. If you take in truck trips, it works out to about 1,100 truck trips in total. What's nice about it is, we actually break into two phases. You have the initial development phase, which would be the longer phase, when you have to basically grade the northern portion of the site, and then, you know, build a retaining wall, build a building. So it actually cuts the volume in about half. So you're down to about 550 truck loads for the first half. It will happen over probably about a six to 10-month period. And then you have the final portion, when we need to lower the grade on the back portion of the site, when you have an additional, about 9,000 coming out, and the remaining portion comes out, and then goes off to a site in Meriden. We tried to break it down as much as we can, unfortunately, we're dealing with a site, as I mentioned, it's got extreme different grade from one end to the other. Believe me, I wish we can balance it, but there's no way to balance the site and make it work. We've actually played the grades on the site, and we raised it a few feet to reduce the amount of fill coming off the site. We raised the building a few feet already.
Forgive me, I've asked this question of others. So, the 1,100 truck trips, that's one way, correct? So round trip is 2,200?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Kevin, town planner, any comments?
Just a comment about the access easement. I have, I did run into a situation recently where the easement on the site plan was shown, but was never filed, and there was no actual driveway up to the property boundary. So the other property owner was going to put an access easement, but it would have required the other site to remove parking spaces and landscaped islands and whatnot. So is there a way to extend some kind of 24-foot access easement onto that property, have it be shown?
Yeah, so we'd have to extend it from the southern driveway, and then down along the front edge to the adjoining property.
Okay. And before building permit, is it possible to file that on the land records, just so that situation?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. And then as far as the construction sequencing goes, just as a condition, is it possible to have the contractor give us a plan beforehand so we can go out and inspect? That's been primarily the issue lately. Things look good on paper, but then work starts, and we have no idea.
We can have the contractor give you his schedule.
Okay.
Good, all right. This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Raise your hand, just one, all right? Please, when you come up for the record, name, address.
Great victory, 3 Shangri-La in Wallingford. I'm a little surprised to be talking now, because this is what I was coming for, and based on that sidewalk discussion, I'm not sure where it was left, as far as if it's approved or not approved. And again, sorry for your loss, but the concern seems to be promoting walking on the sidewalk. Can that not be mitigated by signage in the dealership or approaching the sidewalk? If we don't stop building sidewalks now, when do they get built? The next building that gets up is going to have the same argument, and then there's going to be another hearing as to him putting his in, and the next person putting his in. So if it can be addressed and we stop building them now, we have a better chance of continuing that process down Route 5, which is extremely dangerous, and having connectivity start as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else? All right, bring it back here. Sidewalks, what are the, what's the feeling of the commission? Commissioner Parent?
I think Mr. Sennaviva's plan, or his idea is the best, I mean, to have the covenant so that when you're ready, you can do it all at once, because, I mean, sidewalks has been this commission's baby for a long, long time. And, you know, yeah, we should, and certainly, yes, you put them in, it would make it nicer if you're walking down the sidewalk, and this is one of the problems you have, all of a sudden, you don't have a sidewalk, and then what do you do? Having walked all the way down, do you walk all the way back and go back across the street? So that, you know, I want the sidewalk, we will eventually need to have them, but you have to have them in a way I think that makes sense, and your idea that, you know, when we get them all together, you know, then we can build it all at once. I mean, I hope I'm quoting you correctly, sir.
You are.
And so, you know, and so my, I guess the real question is, why can't we implement that plan? We can't do it tonight, but certainly if you've prepared the draft, and you're ready to submit it to us, you know, would be happy and, I would personally be happy and entertain it.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
I would agree with Commissioner Parent. I, you know, in Kevin's office, there's a map of Wallingford, and it shows all, all the unconnected sidewalks. And it's amazing, because, you know, obviously, most are, you know, in residential areas, but since we've been requiring them in the RF40 and along Route 5, you know, we are seeing more sidewalks. I have a sidewalk in front of my house, my neighbor, nice enough, snowbowed it for me yesterday, but, you know, it is, and I know, Attorney Saviva, you know, I think my day job's insurance, and I know all about the liability. I mean, sidewalk liability, and this is Wallingford, it's not New York City. I would like to propose that we require sidewalks, and maybe then the applicant come back and suggest a revision to their special permit approval that would address the concerns raised. I, I think the problem is, if we don't do it now, when? You know, this is a challenging site, you have a major, major project here that will certainly improve the area, but I think, you know, we would agree sidewalks are good, but I'm not a builder. I, and so I think if we make it a requirement, you know, we can certainly, I know you're anxious for an approval, despite the lack of written confirmation from wetlands, I'm inclined to be for this, but I'm struggling with sidewalks. I'm in favor of requiring that, with the idea that it takes a while, right? And so maybe we could discuss it again as a revision, but I would like to, I would like to suggest that we require it this evening. Not to say that you couldn't come back with some revised discussion, but you would have what you're looking for. That's my, that's just my opinion, but...
By the way, I, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think that's a very prudent course. I mean, that's really the reason that I've raised that I didn't think you necessarily would entertain a sidewalk covenant without having seen it, but I will say, it is a methodology used certainly in other communities, and what it does is it gets, it's a document, it gets recorded on the land records, so anyone who, if Mr. Orsini ever were to sell, which never happened in my lifetime, then it would be still on the land records, it would be an obligation. There's language in the typical draft that says that if whomever is the owner at the time doesn't do it, the town has, you know, has rights against the owners. So, it's an option that seems to have worked. Other communities, for example, have also used as an alternative program where the cost of the sidewalks is put into a pool. The town uses perhaps to put sidewalks near schools where they might be more needed immediately. So that's another option that sometimes exists, because you're right, this comes up, and there is, again, this is one of the clients that doesn't have a problem with the cost of the sidewalks, it's more, you know, whether or not they create a safety issue, and that's his concern. So thank you, it's a good idea.
Thank you. And I would concur, I think what we'll probably need to do is, is put together a workshop for that after the fact. Maybe, Mr. Fajini, we can set some dates for our next workshop, and this would be one of those items. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to chime in real quick, and not to sound weird about it, I agree with everybody on this. I want to see sidewalks there, but I think the right move is the sidewalk covenant. I 100% agree with the liability, given the layout right now, putting a sidewalk in place. I see the liability, I see the issue, and it's only a matter of time before that liability becomes real. So, I think the sidewalk covenant's the way to go, we just don't have it right now. You know, if there was a way to, you know, put it onto the, you know, as a condition of approval without having seen the language, I would love to do that, I just don't know how to make that work. So, I think Mr. Fitzsimmons's plan is the right one, with possibly coming back.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Nace? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move the commission approve a special permit request and site plan approval to demolish an existing car dealership and an existing retail store, merge contiguous properties, and construct a new 23,000-square-foot building for use as a car dealership, and reconfigure an existing parking area, and plans entitled "Site Plan Special Permit Modification," propose on... Automobile Dealership," dated January 4, 2024, and revised to February 6, 2024, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments from the town engineer, Allison Kapinski, dated January 31, 2024. Number two, comments from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, dated 2/9/24. Number three, comments from the town planner, dated 2/2/2024. Number four, comments from the senior engineer, Scott Shipman, Wallingford Water and Sewer Division, dated 2/8/2024. Number five, comments from the Office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal, dated 2/9/2024. Number six, posting of an erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $42,500. Number seven, six final plans to be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Office. Number eight, applicant should install along, across the entire frontage sidewalk, sidewalks as discussed during this evening's meeting. And number nine, final plans to include interconnectivity as discussed to the parcel to the south.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, starting with Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
And yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We are now on to site plan approvals. Site plan 8-30G to construct 22-unit multifamily with associated parking lot, Parata, 898 Church Street, Yalesville, application 227-23. Can I ask the secretary to read the legal notice and correspondence received? So, you don't need the legal notice on that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There may be some duplication in this, so please bear with me. There are two videos that were submitted. We have correspondence from Paul Demati to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated February Included with that is some data, transportation log, photographs. There is email correspondence from Christian Drucker, dated 2/7/2024, to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner. There's correspondence from Dominic Santilli to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated February 8, 2024, including some attachments, including the affordable housing plan for Wallingford, traffic logs. Lot of paperclips here. There is correspondence from the Chief of Police, John Ventura, to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 9, 2024. Memorandum from Janice Small Corporation Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, dated Let me, give me a second to finish what I'm doing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No worries. All right. These may have been read in last meeting, but just to make sure that they're in the record, we have correspondence to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, from Danielle Murphy, email correspondence. We have correspondence from Derek Dixon to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 8, 2024. Email correspondence from Stacy Angelico, Angelico, I apologize if I mispronounced that, January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Jim and Laura Allen to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Tracy Galouli to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Christina Borger to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Dave Taglianetti, and I apologize if I got that wrong, to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Sarah Howard to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Derek Blynn, Kevin Pugini, dated January 8, 2024. Correspondence from Christine Pollak to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 8, 2024. Memorandum from Chief of Police, John Ventura, to Kevin Pugini, dated January 9, 2024. Correspondence from Christian Drucker to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 9, 2024. Correspondence from Anastasia Hubbell, MS, to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 10, 2024. Memorandum from Janice Small Corporation Council to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 10, 2024. I believe that's a duplicate. Correspondence from Jason Adenoffi to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 10, 2024. And correspondence from Christopher Giuliano to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated January 10, 2024. I think I have everything.
Thank you very much. Applicants like to do their presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney to the Sennaviva Law Firm in Meriden. To my left is Chris Giuliano, Giuliano Associates, who's a project engineer. He actually made the presentation to this commission back in your December meeting. I was not engaged at that time. Chris will explain some of the changes, if you will, or whatever modifications have occurred since the December meeting, based upon conversations with the planner and certainly comments from, correspondence from the public. I will note, of course, that this is a site plan application. It's brought under 8-30G, and I know that significantly, you did receive a very detailed and, I think, thorough memorandum from Janice Small, the Corporation Council. That's one of your exhibit that was read in by Attorney Allinson on January 10, 2024, her memo. And I think it hits all the high points, which is what I was going to talk about, but then I saw that she did a much better job, so I'll certainly defer to her language. And again, she's your attorney, and she's giving, I think, the proper advice as to how these applications are handled. I will note that the affordability plan that was before you in December, which I had drafted, has been revised and presented to the planner. Hopefully, he's gotten it over to you. The changes were made that, I guess there were some questions asked at the December meeting, as I understood it. One was, would you change, would the applicant change the allocation of the affordable units? Four being for those at the 60% AMI income, and three units at the 80%, where it was currently four units for those making 80% average median income, and three with the 60%. So, we did make that change so that there is a higher number of units, a greater number of units that are available to those making 60% of the average median income. The other question, I think, that was asked in December was, the plan talked about it being at least 40 years. That is consistent with Connecticut statute, 8-30G, but the new plan specifically details that the affordability plan life existence, the restriction is 40 years. It's not at least, it is 40 years. I think those were the two changes that I know Chris mentioned to me and my client mentioned, so they've been incorporated into the plan before you. And I think with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Chris and answer any questions that may have still be outstanding from the December meeting.
Again, for the record, Christopher Giuliano, licensed landscier and professional engineer. The only other comment that I'll add to what Attorney Sennaviva just spoke about is the affordability plan, and this was what kind of caught me up back in December. It was written to state that the, all the affordable units would be one-bedroom units, and Commissioner, or Chairman, Chairman Seiter pointed out that we also had efficiencies. So, I was kind of in an awkward position. Since December, the applicant has redone his plan of the units. The footprint's still the same, but he's changed all the units, so they're all one-bedroom. So, they're all the same style, all one-bedroom, and therefore, the affordability plan as written is now valid and current, so that any of the units inside the buildings could be an affordable unit as they come online. And as I explained at the meetings, since they are rentals, it'll be the initial seven that we have to offer, and then depending upon if it changes hands or renters leave and they're, the new renters are not, don't meet the criteria, then the next unit that comes on will have to be affordable. So, while we can designate the initial seven affordable units, that doesn't mean for those 40 years, it's going to be the same seven units. And this is the same concept that happened Woodhouse Avenue, the development that Sunwood did, those are also rentals. It's the same that project that hasn't been built down at Main Street in Yalesville, but that's basically what it is for rental units, is that the rental units sort of shift in the buildings, but at no time can they have less than the seven affordable units. Other than that, there have been no changes to the plan since December. I believe those were the only comments that I received from the commission in December, so that's what we focused on. As of this week, I also received some correspondence. I believe that Attorney Sennaviva and the town planner had some communication regarding sidewalks. So, I did put in a plan into Kevin late on Friday, because I heard about it, I think, on Wednesday or Thursday. I don't know if that went out in your packet, my email, or the court, or the plan, but let me go up. I understand it deals with sidewalks. Let me go up and explain, get it on the record, and hopefully, we can avoid a long conversation. Again, this did not come through any real official channels. It was a conversation the town planner and the attorney had, got to me, realized it would be an issue. So, I had my staff put together a plan that shows our project, shows, I'm going to come to this side just in case it works better, shows what we were proposing for sidewalks, what existing sidewalks exist in the area. And then in my email response, when I, when I sent this back to Kevin, it was a little bit of history, because I've been here 30 years, grew up in Wallingford, I know this area, so there, there is a little disconnect. And I know this will probably be the hardest part to really get by, but they did start doing, or they have done some work here at the intersection of Church Street and Highland Avenue for sidewalks. They put in new signal, new signalization to get across Highland Avenue. Recognizing this, we proposed sidewalk along our entire frontage of Route 68, so that we tied in with the existing sidewalk on Shire, that ties in with the existing sidewalk on Crystal. I recognized that right off the bat, that that we needed to do. I did not propose sidewalk up Highland Avenue for two reasons. This is a perched water table. It is very wet in this area. It was the main concern of the Wetlands Commission, so much so that we actually tabled that application. We came out here and we dug six test pits, two in the building location, two in the parking lot, and two in the detention basin. We went down eight, nine feet, dry as a bone in the upland. Very surprising, and we gave, we gave picture proof to the commission, for the Wetlands Commission, about that. And why I say that's very unusual, or I wasn't expecting it, to be honest, because in 2023, when we did the tests, we have 15 more inches of rain for the entire year. So, groundwater tables are very high. Everything is wet. People who haven't seen water in their basement or in their yards are seeing it, but we went down eight feet where we are proposing to build, and we had no groundwater at all, which is, again, very surprising, because you can see water in this easterly wetland all year round. Little bit less so in the westerly wetland, but this is a perched wetland, meaning there is a restrictive layer close to the surface that holds water there all year round. So, knowing that, I didn't propose sidewalks up Highland Avenue, first of all, because of constructability. I think it is going to be very difficult to construct sidewalks there, and then maintenance. After about three to five years of freeze-thaw cycles, that sidewalk is going to heave. I think, as a professional engineer, I think it's a bad idea from the standpoint of maintenance for the town. Secondly, a little bit of history, on the westerly side, the last bit of sidewalk ends up here at Halidge Court. Shangri-La, yeah, Shangri-La was built after Halidge Court. No sidewalks were put in as part of that. There must have been a waiver of sidewalks with that subdivision. So, we have this gap across this subdivision, and then I believe we have two or three properties before we get down to the subject property. I looked at that, and I also looked at the easterly side. We have the Harris-Simovich property, which one day will probably become developed. We have one property, private property, between Harris-Simovich and the Buttonwood Circle subdivision. So, with Harris-Simovich, if it ever did get developed, sidewalk would come north, you'd have one property in between versus having one, two, three, four, five properties. I think five, six properties. So, I've looked at it as sidewalks on the western side are more likely to occur than sidewalks on the easterly side, and that's what I kind of put into my email response back to Kevin. So, having said that, I also talked to the applicant. Excuse me. If the commission is adamant for sidewalks, we'll show them, we'll put them in, we'll have to go back to Wetlands for a modification of our permit, but understand, Wetlands can deny that modification, and that puts us coming right back to you, saying, "We can't do what you want." So, it's kind of a catch-22. I'm more than happy to do it, because I understand, especially after the last application, how important sidewalks are to the commission, and again, I've been here. But I left these off for a reason. I left them off because, again, I know the area, I know what's going to go on and occur here. I think it's a bad idea. But that being said, I will defer to the commission, and there will be no argument, we'll agree to it if that's what you want. And other than that, I have nothing new to add, and I know there's plenty of people here from the public that wish to speak, so with the commission's indulgence, I'll turn it back to you to turn it over to the public. Okay?
Thank you. You good?
Yeah. It's, that's the presentation again. It was primarily presented to you back in December, and I suspect that you all have the minutes and recollection from that presentation.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commissioners. Any commissioners with any questions or comments? All right. Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
So, while you were speaking, Mr. Giuliano, we received a copy of an email you sent, but there's, there's no exhibit attached. Is that what you, is that what you attached?
That is, that is what I attached to my email to the town planner, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Allinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Add to the record correspondence from Christopher Giuliano, just received, to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated February 9, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kevin Pugini, Town Planner. Kevin Pagini, Town Planner, anything from your end?
I did send that email today, but just check next time with this new electronic format. I apologize if you haven't been getting everything. As far as, I've had some late discussions with some of the neighbors that just brought up some extra issues, which I included in the conditions of approval, which I can do after or now, however you wanted to, maybe hear them first and then...
Yeah, I'd like to hear the public.
Okay.
All right, this being a public hearing, can I have a show of hands of who'd like to come up and speak? All right, I'm going to start with the gentleman in the back, maroon color in the back. Say that again?
I want to show the video.
Okay.
Coin to us.
For the record, name and address.
Yep, Paul DeMatty for Shangri-La in Wallingford. First, want to say thank you to the commission for allowing us to speak this evening. Can't think of a more romantic way to spend Valentine's evening here, speaking about 898 Church Street. You know, listen, first and foremost, the folks here in the neighborhood, the correspondence that Kevin's gotten at his office, I mean, it's important to know, no one here is against affordable housing. I just want to be clear on that. This is not against affordable housing. This is really an issue that's come to our attention, and we'll get into some of the details regarding that. You should also have a petition that was signed by over 200 folks in the neighborhood. I think that was dropped off to Kevin's office prior to the January meeting. We're here tonight to discuss facts rather than feelings, emotions, or assumptions. Neighbors have listened to the past Inland Wetlands meetings, both in August of '23 and September of '23, and then also the meeting that was held here in December. You'll notice that if you go back to those three meetings, when it came for public comment, no one was here, no one was present. Okay, so there's been really no transparency either by the town, the developer, any of the abutting property owners, no one was really even aware that this project was underway. Okay, no one was ever notified. We're really here to talk about facts pertaining to the project, specifically to safety and health concerns, and there are a number of those to discuss this evening. And I also want to point out that under the 830G guidelines, it does allow a municipality to reject or make changes to the project as it pertains to water management, health, and safety. I want to be clear on that. We did speak to a couple of developers that are key on 830G developments, both here in town and out of town. We did speak to some folks at the state level, and there's been a lot of, I would say, research by the part of the neighbors, really proud of kind of what's come together here in a very short period of time. So again, no notice to any of the abutting property owners. I think if you look at Mr. Giuliano's plans, there's about four or five abutting property owners, none of which were ever notified, no signage on the property, no public notice, which has now caused obviously major concerns about those among the neighborhood. One, traffic study. We're not aware of what traffic study was done. We'd like to hear more information related to that. If there was a traffic study done, what was done? What did that traffic study look like? We're talking about State Highway 68, east-west passage through the town. Mr. Dominic Santilli will speak. You should have some traffic data that was pulled from the state DOT, as well as we've got some traffic information that was supplied by the Wallingford Police Department specific to accidents, with and without injuries at that intersection. We've got a location of a proposed driveway on Highway 68. That is a very dangerous stretch of road, and that driveway entrance, and I don't know if Mr. Giuliano has the map or what that distance is from the corner, but it's very close to the intersection with Shire, Crystal Lane, and a few of the other developments that are up on that end, along with the intersection of Highland. Was interesting that in the December P&amp;Z meeting, the fire marshal talked about the turnaround, if you guys recall that discussion, a turnaround being developed for a fire truck to pull into that property or the proposed project so it can safely come out to Route And one of the comments actually made was the fact that it's a highly-traveled highway. But we have data tonight that proves that, okay? You've got bad sight lines there, number of accidents, and speeding. And I would make the argument to the commission tonight, we could put a Wallingford policeman on the corner of Highland and 68 tomorrow, and you'd get more money to the town in six months on speeding tickets than you would get from the potential property tax from this proposal. That's how dangerous it is up there. During peak hours, we have school buses. They're traveling to Highland School, Sheehan, and Mary Fritz Elementary. That's in students who also drive themselves. It's also a high-traffic point, right, for folks cutting through town to get access to Again, we've got traffic flow information, accident data information that Dom's going to talk about, reports that have been submitted to you for your review. The next one, again, regarding this sidewalk discussion. I'm going to argue that sidewalk-to-nowhere theory. There are sidewalks on Highland, as Mr. Giuliano pointed out. So when you come around 68 to Highland, which is a highly-traveled area for pedestrians, joggers, walkers, people with families, folks walking their dogs, and et cetera, there is a sidewalk on the opposite side of 68, two houses down, that traverses in the back end of Buttonwood, Weather Side, up back to Highland, along Halidge, and obviously, on the frontage of 68, we're then connected to folks on Shire Drive, up to Crystal Lane, and so on. It's an area for pedestrians from a safety perspective. I think someone mentioned here at the last meeting, it may have been the gentleman off to the end, Mr. Sanders, he talked about living in the area, that sometimes riding a bike is dangerous. It is dangerous, right? I don't know if you guys recall, and the commission remembers, just a year ago, we had two young, three boys on bicycles got hit by a car, and it was a hit-and-run accident. I'm not sure they ever found who did that. It was a very dangerous situation. So furthermore, the need for a sidewalk on the Highland Avenue frontage gives people somewhere to be entering that intersection. Yes, the state has put some crosswalks. There's really no sidewalk there on either side. It's a curb that leads to nowhere. At least this would connect that corner from a safety perspective. Some of the other issues, water, okay? Again, we realize that without public notice, no one from the public was able to speak at the Inland Wetlands Commission. I think Mr. Giuliano yourself stated at the December meeting, it's a seven-and-a-quarter-acre property, and quote-unquote, predominantly wet piece of property. We'd like to understand, was there a water flow analysis done on how the water currently flows at 898 Church Street? You're going to hear from neighbors tonight that abut that property, that have a major, major concern right now, folks that are on well water. Okay, what is the actual implication that can happen based on this property? Once we go in and disturb that area, you've changed whatever's happened there over the last 100 years, right, and how the water flows. You're creating a large, impervious surface, right, which we just talked about in the previous application, right, impervious surface, runoff, water management. You know, environmental impacts, we know there's some protected wildlife in there, right? There are some other concerns that I'm not sure that have been identified. We believe also that this area, and again, the downstream effect, I'm not sure if that's been covered, or there's any data that supports what is the downstream effect of this water through the retention basin that was being proposed. But it also may impact, there's a Meriden Watershed Protection District that is just up the other side of Shire Drive through Kiss, Crystal Lane, up 68 towards Cheshire, and then it's also very close by to the Wallingford Aquifer Protection Area. So again, it's a question related to downstream water flow. And we've submitted some videos to Kevin, of photos of what that property looked like after the last storm, standing water along the edge of 68, flowing onto 68, water probably two, three feet deep that was in some areas on the 68 side of the property. Scope of the project, right, we're looking at basically taking every square inch of upland area and putting it right to the buffer zone of the wetlands. Why? Right? We heard in the previous meeting that the developer, who's yet to show up at any of these meetings, which is, I don't know, a bit odd to me personally, if I was a good neighbor, I would think I would want to be here, right, to make those discussions. But why such a large area, three-story, two, three-story buildings, a parking lot, a 40 parking spaces, a gazebo, a patio? Why so large? And I think that's a question that has to be answered. Seven units out of 21 will be affordable. Does that really put a dent in the 4.5% rate of the town, is that in affordable units right now? Just kind of hard to fathom. It's just an odd piece of property that is very wet year-round, and from a safety concern, I'm not sure I'd want to live there, surrounded by a flood zone and in a wetland area, to be honest. There was also a comment made that they're all now one-bedroom units. Do we know what that revised plan looks like? I'm not sure the public has seen what that looks like, or what that change has been Some of the other issues that are interesting was that at the last Inland Wetlands meeting, there were comments made by a couple of commissioners. One stated that he has followed the property since 1999, and in 2000, a catch basin culvert at the northeast corner was clogged, it caused flooding at the intersection of Highland Avenue and State Highway 68, resulted in a flood at that intersection. Water goes down through Hanover Street and enters the Quinnipiac River. Another gentleman stated he has felt this is a sensitive area, and with all the area around it, and could never support the project. Talk about living conditions. Again, proposal is to build these properties on slabs. I'm just curious to know what engineering data's been done relating to water penetration to those slabs, hydrostatic pressure. Right, so regardless of what time of the year it is, it's a wet piece of property, there's standing water, we've heard that in multiple meetings. Water needs somewhere to go. So for the residents that are in those buildings, where does that water go that's underneath those foundations? How does it escape? How do you monitor those for residents? Is there a safety plan that would require mold inspections, mildew, HVAC issues for those folks? And then the discussion around the fire pit at the end of the property, just curious of what the fire marshal stated related to the fire pit, if there's any safety-related issues, how that might affect the abutting property owners, you know, in the event of a fire risk, and how they would contain that. Not sure that that's been addressed. And then really, interestingly enough, the developer in question, and again, it's not a personal indictment against Mr. Peretta in any form, but the recent issues that are at 86 Barnes Road, what the cease and desist with Inland Wetlands, has now added another layer of questions to the community, right? Should the same issues happen, right? None of the proper things were followed? Silt fencing, the plan that was approved, that was put in place, did not happen? Flooding, mud, what happens to the neighbors here? The neighbors with the abutting properties, those across from 68 that already have a water issue, that we know water's flowing from that property under a culvert on 68 down the other side, right? That's been, that was discussed in previous meetings as well. And then I guess lastly, you know, town of Wallingford and this commission, on your website has an affordable housing plan, and it does talk about seven key areas that were identified as key areas of investment in affordable housing. And this area is clearly outside of that zone. It's not on a bus route, it's not close to any mass transportation, train stations, town hall, the library, retail, places where people work. It's kind of like no man's land, to be honest. So the question is, it doesn't really, really, again, and I understand that it's a suggestion, but it doesn't really adhere to any of those locations. And interestingly enough, in the plan, it does talk about the fact that input from community planning staff, boards and committees, elected leaders, and residents. And again, there was no outreach to the public here in the neighborhood from an ability to understand this plan accordingly. So we've been in a bit of a reactionary mode in the last 45 days, talking to those that are, you know, aware of what the plan is. I appreciate Kevin's openness of being available by phone, by email, for us to stop down at town hall. And with that, unless there's any questions that you may have had in mind, I'll turn it over to the next person.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank each of you for giving us the opportunity to express our concerns regarding the 898 Church Street project.
Just do me a favor, name and address.
I will. My name is Dominic Santilli, and I live at 5 Shangri-La. My property borders the north side of 898 Church Street. I also like to thank Kevin for giving us the time to hear our concerns. He did give us quite a bit of time, and that's greatly appreciated, and it's good for community relations also. To begin with, application 22723, known as 898 Church Street, is a multifamily application, which is an 830G application. And it's my understanding that an 830 application can be denied or modified if the decision was necessary to protect substantial public interest in health, safety, and other matters, such as water management concerns, and two, if public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the project. Now, there are many concerns that I have regarding this project. Tonight, I'm going to focus my intention on one major issue that the entire committee and neighborhood is really concerned about, other than the water movement issue, and it's centered about the lack of a sidewalk on the east side of 898 Church Street bordering Highland Avenue. I was glad to hear Mr. Giuliano state to you that he will, that the builder will build a sidewalk on that location. So I mean, I can just stop talking right now, and that'll be it, but I'm not sure if each one of you is convinced that we need a sidewalk on that area, so I'll continue. The absence of a sidewalk causes a major safety hazard for pedestrians, adults, children. As you can imagine, this is a dangerous situation. The project of 22 units will increase the flow and number of pedestrian traffic around the neighborhood as the two-apartment buildings realize full rental capacity. These residents in the 898 project could range from 22 to 50 of them, depending on who's going to rent it. The new residents will be composed of individuals, couples, or families with children. Currently, residents must walk on the Highland Avenue road surface when in that area. And residents, as Paul stated before, they use it for leisure walks, walking their pets, jogging, and future residents will use this area also. I previously submitted, as the secretary read, two sets of data to the town planner. One is the accident data from the records division of the police department, and the other is the vehicle volume data from the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And that data lists the number of vehicles using the intersection at Route 68 and Highland Avenue. I'd like to share both sets of these data with you. First is the Wallingford Police Department data and the number and type of accidents that occurred at the intersection of Route 68 and Highland Avenue. The records division provided me with this. The timeframe that I asked was for the past five years, January 2019 to December 2023. That's the most current that they have. The location is at the intersection of 68 and Highland Avenue. There were a total of 22 accidents that the police responded to. Multiple-vehicle accidents with no injuries... Multiple-vehicle accidents with no injuries, 13, and multiple-vehicle accidents with injuries, nine. And this data reflects a fairly significant number of accidents that occurred at that intersection. The high number raises safety concerns for pedestrians. A sidewalk on Highland Avenue will certainly make that area much safer for pedestrians on the property's side, not across the street. The statements about the sidewalk to nowhere, well, this sidewalk will connect with the proposed sidewalk on Route 68 and go forward to the next property for about, I think it's about 600 feet. And that area, right there, that 600 feet where people have to walk on the street because they cannot walk on the grassy area, it's got all sorts of gullies and dips and twist, you can twist your ankles very easily on these. And then there's a slight drop-off of two to three feet along the side of that little grassy dirt area. It's much, much safer with a sidewalk in that location. And when you come to the end of the sidewalk, to the first property on Highland Avenue, you can connect to the grassy area. All those properties that Mr. Giuliano referenced from the end of the sidewalk to the north side of the first property past Shangri-La, it's all flat, grassy area. And you've got a good 10 to 50 feet to walk on, but you're going to walk on the first five feet. You're not going to walk in the street. Second set of data for the same intersection is from the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation records the number of vehicles that cross the intersection by using a fixed vehicle monitoring station. This station counts each vehicle that crosses the intersection at a specific time that they set. And the type of vehicles counted range from passenger cars, 18-wheelers, construction dump trucks, and so on, any and every vehicle that crosses that counter. The most recent data is from May 4th and May 5th of 2022 that the DOT provides. It's a 24-hour, excuse me, it's a 48-hour period. The moving vehicle traffic monitor recorded a total of 22,300 vehicles for those two days. And I submitted the data for you that I downloaded right from the DOT site. 22,300 vehicles. Now imagine people trying to walk on that street. The sidewalk would be so much safer, no question about it. That high volume of traffic demonstrates the need for the construction of a sidewalk. Let's see. Additionally, as been mentioned before, the DOT has recently completed the replacement of all the traffic lights at that intersection, installed new pedestrian handicap accessible concrete ramps, and installed a new electronic pedestrian crosswalk controls safety system. To us, that demonstrates that that area needs to be safe, and they've made an attempt to kind of achieve that. As I stated in my opening remarks, residents must walk on Highland Avenue itself. There's no room to walk or jog anywhere but on the street. Future residents will use this area for similar purposes. The increased pedestrian traffic necessitates the construction of a sidewalk for their safety. Unlike the previous presentation to you where the gentleman said that for safety reasons for pedestrians, they're not going to build a sidewalk. And Mr. Sanders asked one of the best questions tonight. Tell me why we don't need a sidewalk? I think that's what you said. I'm paraphrasing. But you didn't get an answer. So tonight, we're asking the commission to deny this application based on the safety issues presented. If it's not denied, then we strongly ask the commission to, one, place a condition of approval on this application for a sidewalk to be constructed on the Highland Avenue border of the proposed site, and, two, delay action to approve until the applicant resubmits a revised site plan that includes a sidewalk on the east border of the property on Highland Avenue. So in closing, I want to thank you for giving the neighborhood an opportunity to express our concerns. Thank you.
Ray Ficarilli, 3 Shangri-La, Wallingford, Connecticut. Again, I also would like to thank the committee for letting us speak tonight. Realize that what you gentlemen do, the members of the committee, is extremely important, not only to the developers, but to the residents who protect all of us as one, keeping us moving forward, making sure we're progressing in the right direction. So thank you for that. I'm going to skip some of my stuff and summarize because I don't want to repeat in the condition of time here, but as I, I live in 3 Shangri-La, and I don't know if you guys realize, 3 Shangri-La used to be a driveway. I live in the original house that was built in 1960, and I moved in about 20 years ago. From the time I moved in until now, the conditions of my property alone, which abuts Dominic's property and the Drucker's property and this other property, have changed. I used to get, my basement used to get damp after rainstorms, to a point where there'd be some puddling. About four years ago, it started, over the 20 years it's been changing, and about four years ago, it required me to cut a 25-foot trench in my basement, put a French drain and a sump pump, because my basement would continue to flood, and that's without any changes of construction, even close to my property. The area changes. The water flow changes in this area, and I'm not sure when the last time any of you gentlemen have been able to actually go and walk the property, but the standing water that has changed on that property over the years is incredible. There's, I mean, the telephone company has a pole that pretty much sits in standing water almost all year long now. It's got one of their big green boxes on it. When they service it, they have to go a bucket truck from the street, or they put planks out, but the property dynamics have changed. And for this property is, as Paul had mentioned, is we're going to now cover the majority of the dry land on this property with impervious surfaces, which those surfaces today clarify the water that hits it, absorb the water around it, and slows it down. It clarifies it as it goes into the ground that probably reaches the well water. That's going to be replaced with solid surfaces that's going to increase the flow dramatically of that property to his retention basin and potentially to the culvert on the northeast side. That today doesn't really even function, but when it does function, and this happens, it's going to send a ton of water to the other side of Highland, which is probably going to create unusable space on that property as well because it's going to get flooded. I don't know what's in the design to accommodate that, but it's there. The property across the street on 68, if you drive by after the rain, it's flooded. A gentleman that owns a landscaping business, his front yard looks like a pond. If this retention basin is going to function as planned, and the engineer had stated, he was shocked to see these test pits were dry. Frankly, I would be shocked because as I drive by that today, you can look into that property and see stakes with red ribbons on them that are sitting in standing water. I don't know what those stakes are for, if they were where a test pit used to stand or if it was just where perk tests were done, but some of those stakes are sitting in standing water today. I don't know how this retention is, this retention basin is going to work, but it needs to be tested during certain times of the year, not just one time of the year, because the water flows throughout that property in different manners throughout the year. The last storm we had, as Paul mentioned or Dominic mentioned, the water's coming off the property onto 68, down 68 into the intersection on these nicely created new pads, crossing pads, and froze because the temperature dropped last night. So that's a safety concern. And I'm going to, I'm going to skip a lot of this because it's going to be duplication, but my concerns here are, one, that somebody from, and request that somebody from this committee actually walked the property itself, got a good idea of where we're going to put housing of 22 units in, I'll say it, it's a swamp, and we're going to build a building in a swamp. If this is approved, that we consider the size of the property and the number of residents so we can reduce the impervious material putting on that property so that it has the least amount of effect on the water. Tree and shrub areas that are going to be cleared or, and the plans to be cleared need to be clearly marked and reported on, I would say, on a regular basis because the property that's being developed behind Cinemas, he did not follow his own plans. Wiped out a bunch of trees or what he called, he called brushes, somebody may say are trees, but he calls them brush, but pretty much cleared everything. We can't have that in a residential area. Ensure that properly-sized bond is put in place to protect the residents and the town of costs that may come if this plan, if goes through, and he does not follow his own plans like he did behind the Cinemas. And review and provide status reports of water flow as the project progresses. I'll add that in my industry, I work in the IT industry, and we provide contracts to our clients and project plans. We don't just give them a diagram and say, this is what it is that we're going to do, here's what you're going to have when it's done. We provide a project plan that has a Gantt chart with timelines on it that says, over a certain period of time, we're going to complete A, B, C, and D. And you have to get approval each time that you hit your milestones that those things actually happen. I would suggest in this situation, we do the same, that there is a timeline that's put in place, let's put a test retention basin out there so that we can make sure it functions as designed and that we don't find out, we don't find out later that the plan has to be changed and that we're getting water issues because the basin did not function as planned. So a timeline that says he will complete certain things along the way and gets approval before he moves on to the next part of his project.
Thank you, everyone. Christian Drucker. I own 283 Highland Avenue, which is the property that abuts 898 to the north. So if you think of where Mr. Giuliano was pointing out, the wetlands, the other side of that is my driveway. Okay? Again, thank you to the committee, commission, and to Kevin for all the work that you guys do, particularly Kevin for taking time to meet with us and talk to us. As Ray mentioned, he talked about 68, and Paul did as well, about the water on 68. I'd like to talk about the water on the other side, which is where my property is, and the runoff. So my property sits below, on a grade level, 898. So any of that water that runs off the back or raises the level of the wetlands is going to push that water onto my property. So I'm curious, as I understand the plan, the thought is that water will come towards my property, take a right-hand turn, and there's a storm basin that's at the end of my, near the end of my driveway, that I think you've seen pictures and video of, doesn't drain the water that I currently get, and my driveway is constantly flooded in storms and so forth. So question to committee to consider is, is how are we handling that water flow and preventing that water from coming onto my property? Second piece of that would be what, you know, we talked about earlier, the erosion and sediment control. Okay? You've got 68 on one side, you've got my property on the other side, and then Shire Drive on the, on the side of the property. There's a lot of work being done to control water and stuff on the, on the front of 68. Obviously, sediment's not going to get pushed towards 68, erosion's not going to happen towards 68. How are we controlling that erosion so that all of a sudden I'm not getting sediment and everything flowing onto my property? I've got one long driveway along the side of that property that's my one egress in and out of my property. How, if that sediment flows, or that gets flooded, or erodes that driveway, I can't get out of my property. So how are we controlling that piece of that? Would be a question I'd like to understand. As the plans are drawn up now, we've got an entertainment area in the back of this property, which will basically sit in my front yard. There's a fire pit that's along the wood line there. Very concerned about that fire pit, you know, A, how you can put it along a wood line, but B, the maintenance of that, is there going to be an onsite super that's going to maintain that fire pit and keep it under control? Because once that, if that fire pit spills on into that woods, all that woods is burning and it's coming right at my house. So very concerned about that. I know the other thing is that entertainment area, again, from a screening perspective, my ask is that there are conditions around putting screening, fencing, whatever you want to say, around that entertainment area. We've got, you know, potentially 30, 35, 40 people living in this property, all going to be on my front, you know, outside in my front yard is to be, from a safety concern, from a line of sight concern, any kind of screening to create a barrier between that entertainment area and my property. The lighting as well, I don't know how that entertainment area is going to be lit, the back of that property be lit, are there lights coming to, through, or from that property through my front windows? Like to understand a little bit more around that lighting aspect of things. And then an interesting question, just around the affordable housing piece of it. I know Mr. Giuliano mentioned that they're now all one-bedrooms, but I would think that the square footage is different in those efficiencies versus the other one, the original one-bedrooms. So how are we deeming what's affordable housing based off of that? I know they're all one-bedrooms, but the square footage seems different. So is that going to be moved around from an affordability perspective? I know there are other people, so I'm going to keep, I'm going to stop my comments there, but appreciate the commission and listening to my concerns as a neighbor that abuts this property. Thank you.
You guys hear me okay? Okay. Good evening. My name's Jason Analfi. I live at Leavenshire Drive. I also want to also thank the commission for the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. As you've heard so far, my neighbors and I have significant concerns regarding this proposed apartment complex. Primary concerns to me are storm water and drinking water safety and contamination. Attempted construction of a 22-unit apartment complex on this very small site, which is primarily wetlands as already identified, will undoubtedly impact the current function of these wetlands and will have negative impacts on the surrounding neighbors. As a neighbor to this property for nearly a decade now, I've seen firsthand how the site is wet year-round and how it discharges water onto Route 68 and neighboring properties. Many of the neighbors of mine have had issues with water in their yards and flooded basements following a heavy rain. From a brief review of the site plans, the proposed development plans to discharge much of the storm water west towards Shire Drive and to the south through an existing culvert that runs under Route 68. These areas are often overwhelmed by storm water already, and are, as a result, this additional water being discharged into this area is likely to make the flooding conditions even worse. In addition, there is also a culvert that runs under Shire Drive that discharges water from west to the east back towards this proposed site. It's unknown at this time if these additional inflows have been accounted for already in the engineering of the proposed storm water management plan. This should be investigated further. Furthermore, not only do the existing wetlands on this site serve as a means of capturing and absorbing rainfall, they also serve the function of filtering water, which essentially permeates into the ground to supply local residents with safe drinking water from their wells, myself and my neighbors included. The impact this proposed development will have on the current groundwater and aquifer function is unknown at this time, and we would like to see a full and complete study performed to assess any potential health risks associated with this development. In closing, we all recognize the importance of creating affordable housing. Equally important, though, is the proper selection of a site for such construction, and based on the evidence- And based on the evidence being presented here to you tonight, we have highlighted why this site is unsuitable for such a development. Connecticut State Statute 830G clearly states that an application can be denied if the decision is necessary to protect substantial interests in public safety and health. Thank you very much for your time.
How you doing? John La Monica, 5 Shire Drive. I just want to talk a little bit more. So we purchased the home in summer of 2022. And before we bought the home, we made sure that we had a well water test, which I have, if the commission would like to see it. The results were negative in all contaminants. That includes pesticides, bacteria, heavy metals. This is kind of a testament to how the wetlands are working. I'm going to talk a little bit more and as a representative of Shire Drive, which is all well water, kind of how that works. So when you build on wetlands, it proposes, it poses a real safety risk for water contamination due to the relationship between the wetlands and groundwater. So there's essentially groundwater is all underneath, and that's where we dig in and get the well from, the water from the well. So wetlands contain a variety of plants and soils, and they all act as a natural filtration. The wetlands itself hold bacteria and all this stuff that's in it. That's why they have standing water. In that standing water, we have our bacterias. We have everything that's been contaminated from the road. That stays in there. And my concern, real concern here is after the cinema incident, where we didn't follow any of the rules, they disturb wetlands. And this may happen to us. And what do you, what do we do as citizens if that does happen? Sediment coming into my well. Right now, like I said, I have all well tests showing that the water is super clean, drinkable, and has been for the longest time. I did speak with Erin O'Hare, and I brought these concerns to her because we didn't get to be in on the wetlands meetings as none of us knew it was actually happening, which I, I don't know if that was on purpose or what, but we didn't know. And I would have brought these concerns then. So when I asked Erin, is our drinking water going to be safe if we start building on this? And we're not talking a small house we're building on here. We're talking 22 apart with two big slabs, three stories high. And when I asked her that, she said, I think it should be clean. I think your well will not be affected. Now, I think somebody set it up here. We don't think. I want guarantee that our, that our well is going to be healthy, safe to drink for my family. And I yield back, thank you.
Jim Allen, Seven Terrell Farms. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to go into a little more detail. I'm in the manufacturing business. I've been in the manufacturing business for about 40 years. I build plants on brownfield sites. I currently have three monitoring wells on my site today. I have six above-ground and below-ground wastewater tanks that get monitored by DEP every month. So I have a lot of familiarity with water and the way it flows. Couple of things that I'm going to talk about is the health and safety of the well water, the storm water, the Broadbrook Reservoir, which is down 68 from where this development is, the retention pond and the outflow of the pond and these critical items. If you look at the aquifer protection area that's on the DEP website, this site abuts the Aquafer Protection Agency area. So I think that we might have to call the Aquafer Protector Committee back in to talk about this. That needs to be clarified. Additionally, there is another DEP map which says final stream flow classifications. If you look at the map, there's a stream right on the other side of Crystal Lane that goes into Broadbrook Reservoir. What's the effect of the outflow, the retention pond, you're going to be on that? Within your watershed protection overlay district within the zoning commission, it talks about direct landing of untreated surface water runoff into adjacent ground and surface water shall be prohibited. Very clear in the zoning regulations. Mr. Giuliani also stated at the inland wetlands meeting a couple of months ago that the TESWELs were six feet. Must be a fish story because tonight they were nine foot deep. I asked Ms. O'Hare to go out and measure those and make sure that there was no water in those, and we'll talk a little more about that in a minute. So we're talking about a proposed development, about seven acres of land. There's approximately three, or four acres of wetlands on the property, and developer is going to develop approximately three acres. There will be two buildings, hard surfaces and non-porous parking lot on these three acres. There are many concerns, as previously discussed, taking three areas of natural land surrounding four acres of wetland when it comes to the health and quality of well water. Has all the due diligence been done in regards to the water table levels above and below groundwater flow? Where does both the surface and subsurface water flow? There are homes with wells that these gentlemen have talked about. We have not seen any studies done other than Erin saying she thinks it's going to be okay. All right, we've heard some people give an opinion that the wells will be fine. I was once told by an environmental engineer that wetlands in the surrounding areas act like natural kidneys in filtering out contaminants and purifying groundwater. Myself being an engineer, I don't make decisions based on people's decisions. One of my favorite sayings, and my wife loves when I say this, in God, we trust, L.L. Spring data. We would much rather see data that shows there will be no effect on surrounding wells from developments of property as it concerns to the existing wetland, surface water, and groundwater. One would assume taking three acres of a natural habitat and replacing it with hard surfaces is going to alter the water table and the subsurface water flow that one would assume could affect surrounding wells. Let's prove this with engineering analysis. We are dealing with people's health and safety when it comes to a developer in a town ensuring that they have safe drinking water. Previous neighbors have stated they've tested their wells and today they're perfectly fine. During and after development, will that be the case? This is quite a gamble without complete due diligence. Years ago, a child in upstate New York died from E. coli poisoning at a county fair, and that was because there was not an understanding of a nearby farm that there was a subsurface water flow that affected the wells at the farm. So how are you going to guarantee that something like this is not going to happen with this development? The proposed retention pond has many questions surrounding in regards to water quality, effluent in the wells, any amount of storm water runoff. I think we heard the previous applicant was going to put something into his storm water that's actually going to clean the storm water before it goes into the sewer, right? Here, it's not going to go into a sewer. It's going to go under 68 into people's properties across 68 that also have drinking wells. Again, I'm sure you guys are very familiar with the zoning regulations. It says the quantity of storm water flow does not result in an adverse effect on properties close to the slate or cause adverse downstream as a result of proposed development. And my question is, have we measured the pre-development water flow? And what is the, what is the estimate of the post-development water flow? In addition, you know, they have to maintain those drainage facilities, right? Is, is one of the neighbors asked, is there going to be a super on site? What's going to be that, that maintenance of that? Has there been any soil information or characteristics based on the site testing by a certified professional soil scientist? Not by a professional engineer, but by someone that is a subject matter expert? Lots of questions. There was a comment in the wetlands meeting that the pond would drain in 24 to 72 hours. Yet in subsequent conversations with the town engineer, it was told it was going to drain in 24 hours. Which is it and how were the flow characteristics calculated? What about, is it going to be fenced? Is there going to be water in it? Does it need to be fenced? What about mosquitoes and other rodents that are going to, going to attract to that? Apparently today, the properties across Church Street experience flooding. Today, there are three acres of land the developer's, the developer's engineer claims drains well. This will be replaced with three acres of non-porous, non-porous roofing and pavement, which would exaggerate this issue. Additionally, this will drain into a culvert which goes under Church Street. Who maintains that? Has the state engineer been contacted? And have they reviewed all the calculations? Certainly more data and studies are needed to determine if this is an issue or not. And again, I'll go back to, should be an engineer, there should be data. Based on these plans, there will be two buildings, a parking lot, a pad for a garbage dumpster, and green space with plantings. All this will drain by design into the retention pond. This means that all the pollutants, contaminants, fertilizer will go into the retention pond. Motor oil, gasoline, transmission fluid, brake fluid, and other automotive fluids will leak onto the pavement. Heaven knows what will leach out of the garbage dumpsters. Fertilizer and pesticides will again go into the retention pond, which again, by the plan, none of that water is going to be treated. Where does that retention pond go? It drains into a swell, might end up in Broadbrook Reservoir, and it goes across the street. Again, the houses across the street have well water. Again, has all the due diligence been done from an engineering and environmental analysis to guarantee that there will be no issues? Not an opinion from an environmental planner that says she thinks they'll be okay. Recently, in inland wetlands meeting, there was discussion about a project. Many people have brought up the project. The developer had an engineering firm develop a plan. Due to issues with this project, an adjacent property owner hired his own engineer. His analysis was the developer's engineering plan was inadequate. So we have two engineers looking at the same property saying, I want you to do it one way, I think it should be done another way. And I think what come out of that meeting was that they wanted to have an independent third-party engineering firm review the project and make recommendations. So again, we've talked about, you know, a number of health and safety issues, and, and our expectation is either the project is denied. If it is not denied, there should be delay. There should be an independent third-party engineering and environmental company to review all the group's health and safety concerns that have been outlined and prove with data, not with people's opinions, that there will not be any issues. And I think in addition, I'm not sure if Broadbrook is the town of Cheshire, the town of Meriden, but I think somebody should talk to them about, is there going to be any effluent into that stream that then feeds their, their water supply? Again, thank you for your time.
Anybody else from the public? Hands up over here. Anybody over here? All right.
Evening, members of the commission. I'm Mary Maschinsky, State Representative for the 85th District. This proposal is not in the 85th District, but Mr. Santilli asked me to look at it and give some comments on it. Affordable housing in Wallingford is 4.47% right now in Wallingford, and the goal is 10%, as the commission knows. And the state of Connecticut is short, almost 90,000 units of housing. So it is an issue. The shortage is affecting our economic development because young workers are looking for cheaper first house in other states because they can't get one here. The shortage is also affecting residents with disabilities who wait for housing and elderly residents. I know when I try to take care of my constituents in the 85th, there's a four-year waitlist for elderly housing. And this commission understands that and is sympathetic to the need for affordable housing, and I thank you for your efforts on that so far. This proposal does add affordable units, which is a good thing. But the units are too far away from the downtown, from existing public transit routes. The site is four miles from downtown. There's also a perched wetland on the site. So the location doesn't really solve the issues that we're trying to solve when we promote affordable housing. I've spoken many times to current residents of affordable units in Wallingford who feel isolated from special events like the Celebrate Wallingford Festival, from the library, and from downtown gathering places. The folks who live in these units who cannot drive or who don't have a car, elderly residents and residents with disabilities feel depressed and lost and somewhat isolated from the rest of the community who is able to get downtown and enjoy the community. And young workers who live here four miles from town, they, they can't use the bus or the train to save money for their future purchases. We're looking at this issue right now at the legislature. I talked to the chairwoman of Planning and Development today about it. And we're trying to see if we can change the law to incentivize placing housing for workers, elderly, and residents with disabilities downtown in the transit-oriented development zone and away from pristine wetlands. I appreciate that the developer is providing additional affordable units. That's a good thing. But this project really fits better into the transit zone downtown. It's better for the residents who will live there. It will allow the residents the freedom to move around without a car. So I'm working on amending the Connecticut General Statute 830G to make those changes. And hopefully this session, we will do that. And our goal is to get affordable housing close to the public transit to help these residents and away from wetlands to protect water quality. So I, I hope we'll be able to make this change in law soon. And I hope the commission agrees with these goals and shares them with me. And thank you for letting us testify.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Happy Valentine's Day. Vin Piscatelli, 293 Highland Ave. I kind of want to just piggyback off what all my neighbors have been saying. Let's just keep in mind, we have standing water now. What's going to happen when you get rid of all those trees? I mean, remember, trees pull water up. They store water. Right? So what's going to happen? We're going to see more water. And my second concern is with traffic and safety. I mean, at this point in my life, if I want to get a good massage, I could just go towards the end of my driveway with my back face in the road. And by the cars going 50, 60 miles an hour, I get a nice gust of wind that gives a nice massage. So what's going to happen when there's more traffic? Let's not forget, this was also the area where those two teenagers from Sheehan hit the tree. Right? Nearly killed. Not a good area. Not to mention, the state does a horrible job of maintaining those traffic lights. I can't tell you how many times I go to that intersection and they're not working. So what are you going to do? You're going to have non-working lights. You're going to have traffic a couple of feet away. Not to mention, people flying up 68, hitting the crest of that hill, and then you expect them to stop when a car pulls out? You're going to have fatalities. I mean, I can't, I hear car crashes at least monthly around there. It's pretty bad as it is. And you know, I'm a father of three suspiciously nocturnal children. They get that from my wife. This is being recorded, right? They get that from me. But it's a real concern for us, and, and there's lots of water. I'm a microbiologist by training. I'm not really any engineering-wise. I work at the VA in the tuberculosis lab. I've been doing that my whole career, 13, 14 years. It's going to create issues. So from a public health standpoint, not to mention the water, which is, you know, we have a lot of mold, which is terrible to breathe in. And I get water in my backyard as it is. And I, I just feel, and I, my, my neighbor is in her 90s. She's been there from one of the original houses on Highland, back when there was farmlands. She's on well water too. So there's a lot of concerns and a lot of questions, I think, that are answered. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? I'm going to bring it back to the applicants to respond to the comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one of the things that I mentioned early in the applicant's presentation is the fact that you have the memorandum from your Corporation Council dated January 10, 2024. And I know you've heard other 8-30G applications, but I thought it kind of crystallized or it gave a nice outline of, of the effect of 8-30G, which is, you know, a section that can be used in certain municipalities. Wallingford is one of them. It doesn't hit the 10% threshold, so it is what it is. And so a number of factors that your Corporation Council points out is that the commission is aware that the standard, it's a very high standard, given the state's determination that providing affordable housing is a high priority. So and I know the governor's spoken about that recently, and everyone talks about the need, and Ms. Maschinsky talked about that, and certainly there's an issue there. And the reason that the state made a different level of consideration is because of that, that priority, the high priority. And information that was presented tonight, all well intentioned. And I think, you know, a lot of it was certainly heartfelt. But as a practical matter, you know, this was an opportunity to present some empirical, quantifiable data, quantifiable probabilities that a specific harm will occur. Not speculation, not suggestion or, or contemplation. You know, one of the things that is unfortunate is that more parties weren't involved in the wetlands application, which again, it's gone to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. The notices were in the newspaper. You know, there was a, I'm sure the applicant followed all of the requirements under your regulations for that type of hearing. regulations for that type of hearing. And after, and that group, you know, does a pretty thorough job. And it made it successfully through the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission so that the issues relative to wetlands, the impact of wetlands, whether or not, you know, what sort of erosion sediment control should be put in effect, all of those were identified at the time of that commission, those commission hearings. And a matter of fact, your town engineer offered information and a memo, or several memos, if you will, on the impact and what she thought was appropriate from erosion sediment control perspectives. So the comments, again, well-intentioned, you know, people know their properties, they know the yards, they know their basements. But there has to be some quantifiable probability, not, you know, not something that's more remote, but something identifiable. And that's really what your attorney tells you. Again, it's just something that I'm pointing out that's in her memo. Traffic. I think this memorandum that was prepared also was specific to the concerns because those reports that were mentioned, the letters that came in, a lot of those predated her memo. General concerns about more traffic is not sufficient to deny an application. You know, the burden is really, if there was a denial, the burden would be on the commission to justify its denial if it goes to a court. So it's not the, the applicants presented everything that complies with the 8-30G application. And I think the fact that we tried to diffuse a legitimate concern about sidewalks, Mr. Giuliano presented the fact that certainly is willing to put, if that was a condition of approval, sidewalks on the eastern side of town, I think Mr. Santilli points out that the sidewalk will make it safer, and I don't disagree. You know, whether you're concerned about the particular developer really isn't a proper issue. You know, who develops the site could be, I mean, the site could be sold. I'm not saying it will be. I'm just speculating like others have. So that it's not necessarily, I mean, these are not applications that are personal. They're applications that need to follow the statute. And if they follow the statute, they should be approved. I'm going to, you know, defer to Chris on responding to a number of the issues. But I think as you were listening to the people speak, I think they were frustrated about their inability to get more notice, even though the required notice apparently was provided, to appear in front of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. This is not the commission to relitigate those issues. Certainly, if, when the approval was granted, there was an appeal period, no appeal was taken. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and he can talk more directly to some of the concerns that they raised.
Again, Christopher Giuliano. I'm just going to go through, because I wrote down the comments as people were talking. So I'm going to hit some of the major ones. First of all, there was a comment about no transparency, no notification with respect to wetlands. First off, when we submit a site plan to wetlands, as you may or may not know, there is no notification requirement. It only becomes notification required if it's deemed a significant impact, meaning it has, the project has significant impact on wetlands. The commission ruled it was not. And the reason why they made that decision was because I'm outside the wetlands with all activities, outside their 50-foot upland review area. And that ties into a couple further comments that were made regarding building in wetlands. The wetlands are basically filters to wells. Well, they are. Even down south, they use wetlands for septic systems, something we don't do up here. But I'm outside the wetlands with all activities. So we are protecting the wetlands 100%. We're not going to be impacting the wetlands. Talked about a traffic study. Someone asked about a traffic study. This is not a major traffic generator. We do not generate enough trips with the 22 units we'll have to warrant a traffic study as outlined in your regulations. We've provided a sightline drawing from our driveway in both directions. We have plenty of sightline from where we are. In fact, we can see past the stoplight to the west, but we do have a stoplight there. And I believe we can see well past Shire Drive, and I think over to Crystal Lane to the, I'm sorry, traffic light to east and Crystal Lane to the west. So we've demonstrated that. There was a question about lighting. And I'm going to get up and go to the map in a minute when I get this, but we've also supplied you a photometrics plan that shows the level of lights. And there are some lights, Bowler lights in the back and lighting on the building, but they're all minor. And we have a lot of land between the back of these units and our neighbors to the north. So there is some natural woods there. It will be natural screening. But if there's something we can do, some additional arbor viti in that area, all someone has to do is ask us to do that, and we'll give some extra screening. That's easy. There was a comment that we're developing most of the property. And then someone came out and said that we're developing three acres. Yes, we're doing three acres of seven and a half. That is not most of the property, but a good portion of the property is wetlands. There's no doubt about that. I've been honest about that. It wasn't sugarcoating anything. We are developing just the upland along Route 68. It's about the only place to develop on this property. It is also the same location where a church was proposed and approved. That church would have had a heck of a lot more traffic than 22 units. Heck of a lot more impact because it was a lot closer to the wetlands at the time also. So we took that into consideration and pulled everything in. Now, to put those building sizes that we're proposing into focus, each building is about 2,600 square foot footprint. A lot of the houses in the area, not some of the older ones, but some of the newer ones, which I think more Shire Drive and Crystal, those houses are that big by themselves. And we're having two buildings, so about 5,000, 5200 square feet. It's about the same amount of square footage or building as on one or two of the lots in those subdivisions. So I'm just trying to put it in perspective. Someone said these were big buildings. They're not really that big. Talked about a flood zone. We are not in a flood zone. We're not in a FEMA flood zone. We, it is a wet piece of property. I've stated that. We are developing on the dry portion. We did test pits. We did them at the wet point in the year, and we also did them in a year that has seen 15 more inches of rain annually than what we normally see. Groundwater levels are very high. There will be, this whole property will have a HOA maintenance component to it because they are rentals. So someone, they won't live on-site, but they will be responsible for maintenance. They asked about water studies. I presume when they said that, they're talking about the storm drainage and groundwater. Groundwater falls elevation. It all comes towards 68 in the westerly corner of the property and a little bit to Highland Ave. Yes, we did stormwater calculations. When I do my stormwater calculations, everything that comes onto the property will continue to come onto the property. So basically, that's a net zero. I'm only concerned with what's happening on the property, so I manage what changes we make on the property. Unlike some drainage calculations done by some engineers, they'll look at a larger drainage area and try to reduce their impacts. Because if you take seven and a half acre site and you put it into a 30-acre watershed, it's 33%. So your impacts are less. I only look at the seven and a half acres, so my impacts are 100%. I then deal with that 100% to be conservative. I also do stormwater calculations all the way up to and including the 100-year storm, meaning I am dealing with storm events of eight-plus inches of rain. And I make sure that our stormwater management area can handle that. Not only can I handle it, it's doing it with zero infiltration rate, which, after doing the tests, is not the case. We are actually going to get infiltration there. It was also said that we have no treatment. That is a lie. We have a vegetated filter strip along our parking lot, so anything that comes off the parking lot will be treated naturally through vegetation. We also have a sediment chamber, which will, once the water enters the outlet structure, it'll go through a sediment chamber, and we'll be pulling out all the sediments and anything attached to it. So we do have two forms of treatment. We do meet the BMP requirements. We do get 80% total suspended solids out, and the vegetative filter does handle things like oils, hydrocarbons, and stuff like that. The fire marshal saw about the fire pit. He had no comment. I'm actually kind of surprised that it is such a big deal. I mean, if this commission thinks a fire pit, a community fire pit, is a problem, ask me to remove it. The developer will probably thank you because it'll be less cost. We just tried to give a small community an amenity. I think it's no better, no worse than a fire pit on a single residential lot. I don't understand the concern, but I'm not married to it. I'll remove it. There were 22 accidents in five years. That's about four a year. I don't think that's really a significant amount. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would say that any accident is one more than what should happen. But unfortunately, it comes down to speeding. And that's an enforcement issue. That's nothing that I can deal with. It's nothing that you guys can deal with. If everyone traveled the speed limit, there probably would be less accidents. That's a fact. I can't make people go slower, neither can you. We provide sightline. And I understand traffic is a concern, speeding's a concern, but this project doesn't generate or warrant the concerns that everyone has had. One gentleman asked if a proper professional had done soil testing. The answer to that question is yes. George Logan, Remecological Services, he went out here, he did soil testing, he flagged wetlands. He's a certified soil scientist. I don't do that. I would never pretend to do that. I hire a real professional to do what I cannot. Again, with respect to drinking water, I don't believe, and it is my professional opinion, because we are not impacting the wetlands, that the wells will not, or the wells should not, I will not say will not, but should not be impacted. However, any resident probably should have their well tested before, during construction, and after. And if there's a problem, then there's recourse to deal with this project. But since we are not impacting the wetlands, and we are, for the most part, except for the houses on the south side of Route 68, we are downgrading. Well, houses on Shire Drive at our higher elevation, same with Crystal Lane, even the houses at Highland Avenue, they're at higher elevation than what we are. So everything is flowing towards 68 from our property, except for that pocket of wetlands along Highland Avenue. It does flow to a catch basin that does go into the gentleman's driveway and across the road. I assume that that is not being well-maintained. It is in the public right-of-way. It would be a DOT responsibility, a town responsibility. It probably isn't maintained as well as it should be, and that's probably some of the reasons why you're seeing backup there. We see the same thing down on Route 68 with the culvert that goes underneath by 300 Main Street, which is right next to Hubspoke now. It's 200, I'm sorry. When it's not maintained, it backs up, and my client for that project has to go out and clean it because DOT doesn't do it enough. It's just a fact. There's too much for the town, too much road, too many catch basins, and some of these Other than that, most of it's been addressed. Some of it, Attorney Senevima has gone through. I've just tried to hit the high points and address some of the things that I think were misleading in what was stated. And I just wanted to get some clarification on the record for the commission. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners have questions, comments? Commissioner Alwerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And there's just been, there's been a lot of concerns raised. And one of the things that I'm looking at is our memorandum from Corporation Counsel, which sets guidelines as to how we have to look at the 830G applications. I appreciate the fact that the legislature may be considering adjusting 830G, but they haven't done that. So what I'm trying to look at is what would be a substantial harm? And what would fall in that substantial harm? And one of the big questions has to do with water. So Mr. Giuliano, you mentioned that you ran test pits. Can you describe that process and how that worked? The public came out, and we've seen standing water in and around the areas. There's a lot of well water in the area. Water is a huge concern. How did the test pit testing work? And what did you get from that test?
In order to, what we did for soil testing as part of our wetlands application, there was a major concern by Commissioner Kern that when we went to go dig our footings for our slabs on grade, we were going to be in water. A typical footing for slab on grades is down about four feet. So we dug down our test pits, basically backhoe, went down as deep as we can with that particular machine, and we didn't hit any water. We did, as I said earlier, six tests, one in each building envelope, came down towards Route 68, did two more, which would have been in the parking lot, and then came down some more and put two right where our detention basin is. The material there was very sandy loam, very well-drained, meaning there was, you know, when water falls from the sky and hits that ground, it gets absorbed. Completely different material than on each side. On the east side, we have a perched wetland, as I've said. And on the other side, it's more of a wooded wetland. It's not perched. It's just, it's a totally different mechanic. And that's why you see a lot of standing water on the east side. The water you see on the west side is up near Route 68 where it collects to go underneath the culvert and head south. So we dug down, we saw no modeling. Modeling is the change of iron in the soil. You'll see discoloration when water interacts with the iron. That was not present. There was no water weeping, and there was no water at the bottom of the test pits. We leave them open while we go and dig all six. We take pictures, we measure them, we document the different layers of soil, and we presented all that to the Wetlands Commission. By the time we closed them up at the end of the day, there was still no water in them. And again, we have enormous amount of rain this year. 18, I'm sorry, 15 inches more than we typically have. That's unheard of. We have water problems elsewhere in town. As you probably are well aware, police department, we're dealing with groundwater infiltration into the detention basin up there, and we have to make corrective actions. Here, we dug down, and there's no water. With this kind of year we've had, I wasn't expecting it. I thought we would, we would have encountered water, and that would have ended this project. But we didn't. So I reported back to the Wetlands Commission. They accepted those results, and, you know, that was it. As far as where water flows, northeast, or the eastern side, which is Highland Avenue, that wetland does flow to the northeast to that catch basin and then under Highland Avenue through the Harrisamovich property, and then down all the way, I believe it's down to Hanover Brook, which goes towards Pregnant Park area. The central, excuse me, western portion of the property flowed to Route 68. They're collected in a drainage ditch in the state right-of-way, and then they flow under Route 68 in a large culvert that heads out to the south. There is a culvert under, under Shire, I believe it's Shire, that flows easterly. And both flows meet at that culvert and go southerly. So we're not going to be impeding the flows that flow to the east at all. As I said, those flows are there now. They'll continue there. Whatever value they have, they will continue to have. I only was really focused and worried about controlling and containing and maintaining our peak flows so that they were less than what currently exists on the site.
So just to recap, because I'm not an engineer.
I understand. Sorry.
And I want to make sure that I understand. The existing flow of water around the property, based on your studies, is not going to be affected by this build, is what you're saying? The one that, the flow that runs up by the Harrisamovich property?
We, yes. We are not sending any more water towards Highland Avenue and Harrisamovich property. Everything that we're developing, we're collecting, we're putting it into our detention basin. We're holding it back, metering it out, so our post-development flows are less than our existing peak development flows.
Perfect. So the build proposal, as far as what you're saying, is any water flow that may be generated from the property, you're remediating by your catchment basin? from the property, you're remediating by your catchment basin?
Yes.
Okay. That being said, there were some questions about your catchment basin and how it would be treated, how it would hold, how it eventually empties out and may affect underlying water in the area. Can you just explain that a little bit more?
Yes, I will. And best that I do it with the picture. So basically flows, even from this back area, we have some yard drains where we'll be, where we will be collecting flows from, let's say, our entertainment area, our recreational area for the residents. All of that, including roof runoff from the buildings and sheet flow off the parking lot, will come into the basin. The flows off the parking lot come through this vegetative area, which is basically a treatment area. This is straight from DEEP's requirements and what's needed. They enter the basin, it'll infiltrate in through the ground, even though we didn't include it, we, it'll infiltrate into the ground. Large flows or larger flows will enter this stand pipe, which is perforated. From there, it goes, from the catch basin, it goes straight through into our riprap plunge pool, and then down to the swale in 68. Anything that comes off our parking lot from the High Point enters our catch basins. From the last catch basin is also sediment chamber. So any, any type of sanding material, any kind of sands, not, they usually don't use salts now, but any of that will be collected and caught in this. And it'll be, basically, it's treated through that before being discharged into the right of way on Route 68.
And the HOA would be in charge of maintaining and keeping that?
That'll be part of the fees for the people who live here, the gentleman, Mr. Peretta, the applicant, he's basically going to be, you know, responsible for maintaining it unless he hires then a management company to handle this, but that will be his responsibility to maintain all of this. Snow plowing, basically keeping this clean, and this is only two feet deep, so it's not very deep at all. Most of the time, it's going to be dry, except for during rain events. So we already have a maintenance schedule on our plans as part of the inland wetlands approval, about how each element in this plan is to be maintained year round, and all of that is spelled out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I just have one question for Mr. Pajini. Mr. Pajini, are you aware of any wetland, any concerns from our environmental planner regarding this water catchment plan?
No. If it's not expressed in here, then, and it was approved in Wetlands, then I believe she reviewed it to the extent.
And do you know how often that basin would be inspected by the town?
There's a full maintenance plan, so it would be filed on the land records and inspected by the actual property owner.
Okay. And if there was a concern with that basin not running properly, what would, how would that work? Would they contact their office?
Yeah, the, you know, if someone sees us not working, they can contact our office, or you can try to contact the applicant, developer, something along those lines. If it's during construction, obviously, they call our office. If it's post-construction, though, it's the responsibility of the developer. And I'm sure Mr. Giuliano knows the operations and maintenance plan better than I do off the top of my head, but it looks like it should be monthly according to the operation and maintenance plan, but maybe he can clarify.
I think it may be quarterly. Again, some things, some things, like catch basins, those I know are basically supposed to be cleaned every six months. The basin is usually quarterly. Most likely what's going to happen is when they're out and they're doing any kind of land mowing, maintenance, they'll, they'll be right there. They'll mow that area twice a year. When they do that, if there are any sticks or debris around the outlet structure, they're supposed to pick them up and remove them. What we did as part of this, and what we're doing on all plans really moving forward, is not only are we modeling these without any filtration, we're modeling that stand pipe as if there's no perforations in the side and seeing what happens. And it doesn't fail. So basically, what it'll do is it'll fill up, the top is open, so the water will spill through the top and still go out. So even if it, that pipe, stand pipe, which is perforated, became 100% clogged, the outside, it would still function. The basin would still function up to 100-year storm without overtopping and sending water into Route 68. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. May I allow to ask an additional question?
No, not right yet.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a question of the town planner. Kevin, as I look at the information, the plans I have were dated, are dated June 2nd, 2023, and they're revised December 5th. What is the timeframe, timeline for this commission on this application?
That initial submission was through Wetlands. It was also, they tried to submit it to my office, so they didn't have the affordability plan. So the affordability plan was actually submitted, I believe, in November or December. You certainly could act on it, you can table it, but I'm not sure exactly what the statutory timelines are in an 830G exactly. You probably have to act in some capacity at this point.
You, you actually are answering the question, because that's my real question. Because it's an 830G, when's the last date this commission can act? Are we there, or could it be continued to the next month? Is my first question.
I believe if the applicant consents. I don't know if Attorney Sennaviva can clarify that, but I believe if the applicant consents, it's roughly the same timeline as any other application.
Yeah, the 8-30G, the timeframes are all consistent with your site plan approval. It's through your regs. So there's an additional 65 days.
Are we within the 65 days, or only with your consent could we get an addition?
Without being facetious, I wasn't here at the beginning of the, I don't know.
I know.
It might have been, I'm actually looking at minutes.
All right.
I'm saying, for example, there's a $20,000 bond that Wetlands put on.
Right.
So you're aware of that.
Right.
Someone asked about a bond. December 5th was the first meeting.
I could answer that. You'd have probably until mid-March to act on it. It was filed on 11/14/23.
Okay. So that's a firm answer?
Yes, but they would have to.
Well, you're, you're, you're my town staff. That's why I'm looking at you. I know the applicant is here frequently. I just, some of my questions are related to, do we have to decide this evening, or can we continue? I still have questions, and I'll still speak, but I just want to know, are we driving to conclusion this evening, or can I put things on the table for review and response for next month? Is, and I know it's just one person, but I, I kind of want to know the calendar, and I know because it is a 830G, it's a little different. So that's why I'm just, I want verification before.
Yes, the applicant would have to consent to the extension, though.
So if we can continue it with the applicant's consent?
Yes.
Okay. Then I guess, I just want to make a couple comments in relation to that, because we didn't have the benefit of, in December, of having the input that we've received this evening and were received in advance of tonight's meeting. I think, you know, forgive me, I'm from the west side, so I know the area, I know the intersection quite well. I knew, I knew that the young boys were in the accident that someone referred to, so I get it, I lived there. Some of you might remember, we used to have a commission member who sat in the far end, my friend Frenchie, before he passed, lived right on Nichols. So again, knowing the area, that, you know, I get it. The issues I heard this evening and did not hear in December relate to some of the issues I kind of was scribbling down here. A question through you, Chairman, to the applicant. This project, because I've reviewed the memos, this project would be city water, city sewer.
Correct.
Okay. And I heard from the residents, I guess everyone else out there has well water.
I believe Shire, Crystal, and across the street on 68 are well. We're bringing, we're getting water from Highland.
That's what I was going to ask you.
I think so. And I'm pretty sure.
This will bring water across 68?
It'll bring it, it's down, it's actually a private water main that we're picking up in Highland Avenue close to the intersection, and you can see it on the plan. Water comes in to a private hydrant. If, at some point, I would imagine if the water division wanted to extend it, or if there was an issue, it's that much closer to Shire Drive, Crystal, and other places.
So as of today, there's no town water available on that side, in that parcel?
No.
Okay, I just, I'm looking for clarification, because I know you, this project is city or town water, town sewer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And the municipal water ends at the entrance, basically just north of Route 68 in Highland Avenue. That's where we're picking it up.
Okay. I've sat in the commission for a little while, and I read with interest the memo from the town, the town, excuse me, the town Corporation Council, and I think Commissioner Allison was referencing it. It really reminds the commission that an 830G application overrides a lot of things. And I think, one of the things I want to mention, if I could just take another minute, Mr. Chairman, is several members of the commission, several members of the public who spoke talked about not knowing. And I, I just want to state for the record, and I hope in your discussions with the town planner, this is a site plan, it's not a special permit. So it's, we don't require, aren't required to have a public hearing, but we do. We've always allowed it on a site plan. But I bumped into someone last week when I was throwing axes, and they said, how come we weren't notified? And I said, it's a site plan. It's, it's not, it doesn't have the same notification requirements. Nobody was hiding anything. It's just the way the regulations are written. But obviously, you know, you're, you're all aware of it this evening, and I think, you know, there is substantial public interest in this particular application. I personally would be in favor of continuing this. And I will, I will say, one of the reasons why is the changes that were presented tonight, I think State Representative Muzinski raised it very well. I do not use the term affordable housing. I use the term non-market rate. And we need more. And I generally favor non-market rate housing. I would not want to misquote Representative Muzinski, but these units are just too far away. They're too far away from the transit district, they're too far away from bus lines, and the location, you know, and I frequently sat up here and talk about, you know, the location doesn't fit work. I realize seven of the 22 units would be non-market rate. So we're not talking a massive project, it's 22 units, and only seven would be non-market rate. But the, but the challenge here is it doesn't rise to what I would say I would envision for non-market rate housing in town. We, you know, and I, I think, you know, I would like an opportunity, the other, the other thing I would say is, the change you made this evening from December, when we last spoke, is it's the one-bedroom units. So it's not encouraging families. It's not, you know, with a one-bedroom, we're not going to see kids there. You know, and I, and which, you know, I have two boys, they're good guys, you know, I want them out. So, you know, but I can't get them here because, you know, it's one-bedroom. But I think part of it, too, is I don't know if a one-bedroom complex with 22 units all being one-bedroom. I mean, I, I like the mix, but I, for whatever reason, you're proposing now one-bedroom, it's, I'm just thinking about it, and I think part of it is, as I said, I don't know if this is the best location or proposal for non-market rate that we desperately need in Wallingford. I, I want to be very clear, we need non-market rate housing. So I know it's an 830G, I certainly have questions for others, but I don't want to take too much time, but that's all I have to say at this time.
Hold on. With your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to address that comment.
Yeah.
And it's kind of, we had a church proposed here, it was approved, we're proposing this, if not this, I hate to say it this way, is Wallingford going to buy the property and keep it open space? Because literally, that's it. It's sat for a long time. It's sat for years. You and I both know this, growing up on the west side. This is just, you know, this is probably one of the better uses of the property that could be done, and it meets the need for Wallingford. Are one-bedroom probably the best? That's not for me to say. I mean, that's what the applicant wants to propose. You know, I don't get to make the decisions in that case. I just deal with coming up with a plan. So I do understand that.
Yeah.
But, you know, if, and making the statement that non-market rate housing should only be or near the TOD section, that goes against a lot of previously approved units that we, that we have in town. So that doesn't make a lot of sense. I understand the concept, but in reality and in practice, that hasn't happened either. So maybe it's time to redo some of our, our concepts and our regulations on where affordable housing, but we do have a reg that allows it anywhere in town, in certain zones. I worked with the last town planner to get that written specifically for this reason. So, you know, with that, I understand your frustration, your concerns.
Yeah.
But we, what do we have left to build and where?
Appreciate that. If I might, Mr. Chairman, I respect, you, you respect my position, I respect yours. It's, it's just difficult, and I think, you know, it's just, it's worth noting, the bar is so high on an 830G. I get it. Right, so.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to, you know, follow on with a couple of my fellow commissioners' concerns about the 830G. I do agree that this is not the ideal application for, an 830G is defined by, you know, the seven or eight best, you know, locations for 830G housing. However, based on the legality of the 830G requirements, it can be anywhere in town. And I think, even though it's not the best ideal location for the non-market rate housing, bar your term, you know, it, it really does not negate, you know, the application, you know. As Mr. Giuliano said, this can be anywhere in town. Again, I, I agree, it's not, not an ideal location. But, you know, again, based on comments from Corporation Council and everything else on the record today, you know, it's, it's really not something we can, you know, decide against this application. So I do have, you know, a couple other, and at this point, probably pretty trivial comments on the application. You know, at, at the last meeting, Chairman Seichter got into a question on, you know, the number of years that these units would be maintained is affordable. And one of the conditions of approval is the final affordability plan. And I think Attorney Sennaviva mentioned, you know, right now, we're looking at a 40-year affordability for this. And, you know, I thought at the last meeting that, you know, 40 was a concern for Mr. Seichter, and I think he was aiming to see if that could be increased as far as the number of years. So, you know, I don't know what the final affordability plan looks like at this point. Again, it's a condition of approval. So I'd like a little more info on that. I do, I, and Mr. Allison talked about this at great detail, about the inspection process for, you know, your sediment containment operation. And, you know, I, it sounded like there is a maintenance plan, but what I would like to see is that. it sounded like there is a maintenance plan. But what I would like to see is that be part of the condition of approval, so that, you know, when, you know, this is inspected, and I'm not sure what the, you know, is it annual, twice a year, you know, every other year? But, but what I would like to see, just to, because I know these things have gone unmaintained in the past. What I would like to see as a condition of approval is that we, the town planner, get forwarded, you know, an inspection report when the, the maintenance is completed, so that, you know, we know it's being done. I think that's a critical piece of this, just to put, put the residents' mind at ease a little bit. I mean, this is not the end-all of, you know, this application, but, you know, I, I, I think it would help in making sure we don't cause any other problems. Also, I, I would like to see the, the sidewalks built, even, even if, as you say, Mr. Giuliano, in three years, there's, there's going to be problems with it. You know, I, I, I think it's worth having those, those put in. You know, they, they, it, it can't hurt. The recreational area, you know, a fire pit sounds good, but I, I don't know if I'd want to rent one of these units just for a fire pit. So, in my humble opinion, you probably don't need that. I think there was some comments from the residents about, you know, there might, might be some negative impacts there. So, I'd kind of like to see that omitted. We do, I think the same resident talked about screening for his property. That is in one of the conditions of approval. I don't know if, as far as that condition of approval, there has to be any more detail that, to that, you know, what kind of screening, you know, more trees, but, you know, whatever could be done to, you know, provide a little extra protection there. And I, I think, I think that, that covers all my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we're not supposed to be funny. There's probably a joke about a fire pit in a wetlands area, but I won't make it. No, on a serious note, though, Mr. Giuliano, the, there's about seven and a half acres. You mentioned you're building on three. Out of that three, once, if approved and developed, how much of that three acres that are building on would be considered impervious?
I couldn't give you the exact number off the top of my head, but the impervious area would be the area of the parking lot and the area of the buildings. And we'd probably call the area of the pavers in the back as well. I can get you that number. That shouldn't be a problem.
I tend to concur with Commissioner Fitzsimmons that it'd be nice to have some more time to digest. But, you know, I think, and I'm a graphical guy, so if you imagined that I had seven small cups out here enough to pour the water into, could be commuting cups, could be shot glasses, you pick. But if I pour the water into them and take away most of three of them, the water's got to go somewhere. With city sewer, I realize that there's some amount of water that can be removed from the site without having to drain through it. Can it handle it? What happens to the other water? I think those are some really important concerns, and particularly because, you know, water problems, once we create them, are very, very difficult to resolve. So, this isn't something that I think we want to see if there's a problem and deal with later. And I know that we're, and I, I trust that we're all trying to not only do the right thing, but find the right way to go about doing it. I don't suspect that 830G was intended by the legislature to provide developers with immunity from zoning requirements. And I can only speak to this room, but I don't think that, in our case, our zoning requirements are intended to be burdensome, or intended to be beneficial. I would hope that we can find a way to work within the intent of 830G and also resolve the other things. And maybe there's some fine tuning that, that our representatives in Hartford can do to help clarify, you know, the right balance that we're trying to strike with this new idea. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parent.
Next to Mike.
I think as we all have tonight, because it's seen that we relitigated our, we relitigated the inland-wetland process, which is not within our purview.
Okay. And, you know, because the applicants have come in with the inland-wetland approval, which is, you know, pretty extensive. Everything that's got to be done and, and the, and the requirements we have. They've met all those. They are now going to, and this project's going to be served by City Water and City Sewers, which I think, you know, which is certainly a lot different than if it's being served by Septic. I, I think Mr. Giuliano has answered every possible question that could be answered. So, I really don't think we need to put this over for another month. I think that applicant has prevented, the public has had their opportunity to be heard. And I think Mr. Giuliano, applicant, has put together all the questions and probably more so of the things that have to be answered. And I, I'm thinking at this point that this matter could be settled tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Parent. Any other commissioners? You know, I, I guess I would just chime in that I actually think we need a little more time. That's just my own personal opinion. You know, the public has come up with, in my opinion, quite a few comments. And, and I know that you've answered a good portion of them, but I think there's still some more information. I, I heard Mr. Fitzsimmons, I heard Mr. Cohen and, and Mr. Allison were asking for something. So, you know, I would, I would be more in favor of continuing this, but I wanted to throw that out. I know we, we've got the sidewalks as an issue, is where everybody is on that. And fire pit is, they're minor, but those are some things that I think need to be talked through too. So, thoughts on steps with commissioners? Go for it.
Yeah, I, I do think we, we have some outstanding questions that need to be researched by the applicant. And I would favor going next month.
I would, I would favor continuing the public hearing, which means, the gentleman. No, no public hearing. It's not a public hearing. Site plan, right? Site plan. Sorry. Even though the public still will be able to talk at the next one, but I don't want to get us in trouble. Sorry. Yeah, I, I, I have, I have questions on any suggested conditions. I would like to consult with town staff further outside this meeting. And I think the affordability topic that was raised by Commissioner Cohen needs to be finalized and ironed out, so. Mr. Allison.
I agree. I think I'd like more time. The public has raised, in my mind, a serious number of questions about water. And I'm not trying to beat that dead horse, but I want to know more about the water. I want to know more about the maintenance plan. I want to give the applicant time to develop and answer formally the questions that, that I brought up tonight on paper, because we've heard earlier that I like things on paper. And I, I'd also encourage our town staff to maybe supplement their already existing reports, if they're so inclined to do so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other commissioners before we ask the applicant? So.
I like the Commissioner Parent's comments. I understand. And, and, you know, typically, when this commission asks for additional time, it, it's, it's based upon the fact that the applicant has to come back with some information that you're looking for. And I just want to make sure that both Chris and I have an understanding as to what things you're expecting to receive from us. I know Commissioner Fitzsimmons is talking about having some additional communications with town staff, and hopefully that will include town attorney. But I think, you know, there's a number of legitimate issues. It, it is a different type of application. You know, location, there, I mean, part of her memo, Janice Small's memo, is someone mentioned this isn't within the town's affordable housing locations. And she notes it doesn't, that doesn't control the application under 8-30G. It can't be used as a basis for denial. So, location is really not the factor, whether there's public transportation or the like. That's not typically within the purview of an 8-30G. But you probably want to hear from somebody else other than the applicant's attorney, so that's fine. So, again, without being, you know, belaboring this, I, I don't have any problem with my client consenting to additional time. I just want to make sure that we come back with the answers that you're looking for. So, I'm, as I'm looking at my notes, I don't think sidewalks is an issue other than you seeing them on the plan. Fire pit removed. Stormwater management plan, I'm not sure what more Chris can provide you, but I guess we'll take a look at it and see what its maintenance schedule is and have that.
Did you get a copy in your packets?
Wouldn't be by paper.
Yes, it would, yeah, no, eight and a half by 11. No, we haven't gone digital yet. That's the stormwater management or stormwater. That's the, that's the drainage count.
The drainage report.
Be a stormwater or an open space plan. You know what? I'll just get, I'll just get, I'll just get more copies. It's fine.
Please resubmit.
No problem.
We can do that quickly, so that hopefully we can get to you.
It's existing document. That's not a problem.
In this next month.
And I heard that someone wanted some inspections. We'll add inspections to that document as well, so we can deal, deal with that.
Some additional screening, I heard.
Yep.
So, hopefully we've hit all the issues.
That's it. But I'll, I'll resubmit just in case that everyone has it. Like I said, put the inspections in there too.
I got November.
Hasn't changed since then.
Sorry. Anything else? We're good?
I, I think, I'm just hoping that I've hit all the items that you've left for us to opine on or return with some more information. You know, we're happy to do it. I just want to come back and you said, "Oh, you forgot these three items," because I'm just going through the list that I've compiled. And I'm happy to talk to your, you know, maybe the best option is, is hopefully this commission can talk to your planner over the next few days. And then, within a week's time, Kevin and I can make sure that we're on the same wavelength as what you, you gentlemen are looking for in return. I just want to make sure we're, we've hit everything. That's all.
Kevin, you good on your end?
Uh, yeah. I don't know if you can maybe each send me what you want to see on the plans. Then also, it was brought up to me by some residents that there may be some, maybe some additional screening or, or fencing around the basin, just, you know, just for aesthetics and maybe safety purposes. That's just one more thing I wanted to bring up.
All right. Just for the public, if we, we continue this, you'll be able to do the same thing. So, you'll have your right to come up and speak again. So, with that being said, what would the commission like to do? Do we have a consent to continue?
I did, I think I might.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You asked me again, I think.
I can make a motion.
That would be nice.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the application for site plan 8-30G, Peretta 898 Church Street, Yalesville, to our March meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nays? All right, motion carries. Thank you. See you on Monday. March, march, march. Do I think we're going right now?
Monday's another President's Day.
I would be a town teacher.
All right. Pass it on to you, our town planner, our annual report. Anything?
I'll probably wait unless you can hear me. So, yeah, you just need to vote on it if there are any, if there are any issues with it, or you want me to just do a brief overview, however you wanted to approach that this late in the evening.
Has, has everybody, commissioners, have you all looked at the annual report?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, here, you can have mine. Is everybody comfortable with voting on it today?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the planning and zoning annual report of 2023 as submitted by the town planning office.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries. All right. Administrator approval? Approvals. I think it was in your packets. There was one?
Yes. January ZBA decisions and ZBA notice for February. And I just wanted to add on as part of the zoning enforcement, generally, that as part of ZBA, we did get permission to proceed with the ordinance committee for increased citation ability. So, that should be forthcoming, hopefully. That's basically it.
Just, just a reminder that we've got the FOIA and ethics training on, what is this, February 29th?
Yes, yep.
And if you cannot attend, please let, Janice know or you know?
Neither myself and Janice, that's fine.
Okay. And we're, it's here, right?
I believe so. I could double check for you and send it out.
It's here, yeah. I think I remember that. All right. Any commissioners have anything else? Welcome to your first meeting. A little different, but.
Good to be here with you guys.
We've brought in a lot of extras.
There'll be, there'll be somebody sitting here the next time. I get moved over, which I'm good with. Do I have a motion to close?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are closed.